May I request all of us to stand up and request all men to take off their hats for the national anthem. Gai, hey, good day. Matit, Su, how are you? It is now eleven o'clock, so we are starting right on time. And we would like to express our deep appreciation for being on time and having said in a way that is respectful of the COVID-19 regulations. My Kosa is not good. I come from the North Transvaal. There is no Kosa speaking people. So I'm not going to speak in Kosa. My Africans is good, but my Chinese Africans are bad on date of birth. So I'll speak in English, not because I want to discriminate against the Kosa-speaking people and the African-speaking people. And I must apologize that I can only greet in the Que language, which I think is equally an important language. And I think when we go back to Parliament, we will make sure that this language is also recognized like other languages. On behalf of the honourable members sitting in Frontier, I would like to welcome all of you and introduce ourselves. Because I have the mic already, I'll start with myself. I'm Professor Matole Muzeka. I'm the chairperson of the Ado Committee that convened this meeting. I'm going to ask the members of Parliament that are in Frontier to introduce themselves. We have brought along with us a powerful team of experts from Parliament who will be capturing the proceedings, because they don't like to be introduced. They want to set up their systems, so we're not going to introduce them, not because we're discriminating against them. So I will start on my left. Each of the members of Parliament will introduce themselves. Thank you.
Molweni, ndi ngunolitan ndobongwana, ndi lilungu Lale Committee yenziwé ipalamente yé tu yasemzans Africa, ndi kwa nguslalo we Public Works and Infrastructure, pa okulangu yasé palamente, engos.
Gwia mora yela. My name is Dr. Mimi Gondwe. I'm a member of this committee. I'm also a member of the Joint Standing Committee on Intelligence and the Constitutional Review Committee. Ba ya danke.
Dumelambachayto, linalaga ki Dibulelo Malshazi, kililukula palamente, ywile kililukulaw committee agriculture, land reform and rural development, ywile kililukulaw committee e yasé section twenty-five, edilanka amendment yá the Constitution on section twenty-five. Ki ya libor.
Gwia mora, molweni, dumelang, good morning. Ndingunkosi zewelweli le mande, ilungo Lale Committee, nelungo Lengu ebekleyo ipalamente, kanyé uslalo we committee yagwa agriculture, land reform and rural development, engos.
Molweni, my name is Seko Mafanya, a member of Parliament in the Committee of Defence and Military Veterans. Thank you.
Gwia mora, my name is Nazir Polson. I am parliament's lead in the National vergadering for the Economic Freedom and Guides of the South Africa. Ba ya danke.
As I said when I began, I think the organizers of this meeting understand the COVID-19 regulations. And yourselves are law-abiding citizens of our beautiful country. I was going to explain the COVID-19 regulations, but it's quite clear you even understand them better than me, and you are seated according to the requirements of those regulations. So I'm not going to waste your time explaining what you are already observing. I think we will simply go into the business of the day. But because I'm part of a collective here, the collective is whispering to me to say it's important that I say, I repeat, that wearing our masks is important, keeping social distance is important, and you will see our committee secretary, advocate, Ramano. Each time I take a mic, he sanitizes it. When I give it to the next person, he sanitizes it, which means that we ourselves are observing the same COVID-19 regulations. And it's important that we all do that, because we value your lives and our lives. And let's continue to support these regulations that our government have put together. Some of you may ask us, why are we here again? Because you'll recall that there is a committee of Parliament, which I call Chair, called Constitutional Review Committee. That committee was tasked by Parliament to go to the whole country and ask whether or not it was desirable to expropriate land without compensation. And that committee had to do so, because we are a participatory and representative Parliament. That means after you have elected people to Parliament, you are not saying the elected members of Parliament have the monopoly of wisdom. The wisdom resides in the people, yourselves. And that's why we say this democracy is a people-centered and people-driven government democracy. And you said that it is desirable to amend section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. Now, on the basis of that clear answer from the Democratic majority in the country, both black and white, Parliament then established an Ado Committee, which had to deal with the second question. The second question is, what type of amendments to section twenty-five should we bring about? Which means today we are not asking you whether or not section twenty-five should be amended. We are saying, in the desired amendment, what is the content that you want to see in the amendment? So we actually are going to deal with the substance or content of the amendment. And because each and every one of you is important to us, we cannot have a situation where one person speaks for half the day and others don't speak. So we will allocate three minutes to each speaker, and after that three minutes, the next speaker. Because we want as many of you as possible to speak, because I believe you would not be seated here earlier than us if you don't have something valuable to say to us. But also, there are people outside who are law-abiding, who did not storm into the area and forced to be seated, who expect that we all have to observe the law. And we are going to request that those who have spoken will have to leave, so that those who are outside can come in, so that when we live here, no one should say, "I was at the venue, but I was not allowed to enter the hall," and say what I wanted to say. So what I'm going to do is I will start on this side. I'll take all the hands on this side, and people will come and speak each three minutes. When I'm done, I will come to this side, take all the hands, and people will speak. And because I'm a professor who was very poor in arithmetic and mathematics, I may give others three minutes, others three and a half, and disadvantage others. So I will allow my colleague, Meipulelo, who was good in arithmetic and mathematics, to keep the time. Now, when I say I make an X, it means his cut is pale, and therefore I'm going to follow her instructions. And also I'll expect that the speakers also follow the instructions that she will be giving me. So we are going to start. And keeping to the three minutes is part of self-respect and respect for others, the equal right of others to speak. I thank you, and when I'm done here, I will go to the back, because the people at the back have the same rights. There are no back benches. Even if you are seated at the back, you have the same rights, equal rights, as those who are in Frontier, so don't worry, you will get your chance. Now, we are going to give the people who raise their hands stickers. Now, only people who have been given stickers will have to come and speak. So if you don't have a sticker, don't come, unless maybe you are answering to the call of nature, and when they give stickers, you are not there, we won't disadvantage you. So can we start and take hands on this side? I think I'll come to these two rows. Let's just take that side. Yeah, 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 let's take the... No, all the hands, we take all the hands on, you know, from here, you see? Yeah, yeah, all the hands on this side, leave these two rows in the middle. But they don't seem to be looking at the back. Can you make sure that everybody right at... No, no, I don't mean on the stage, right at the back, inside the hall. Are there no other hands here? Okay, yeah. But no mungu kulumu sendo, no semfaz. Can we take the first hand?
Is there a agreement, Mr. President?
I'm sorry, every speaker must say who they are, from which organization they come from.
He's asking if you're ready. Meneer, my name is Brian Musto. I am a rights learner and also a financial educator. I have given my life to apartheid to fight, so that thereafter, nineteen ninety-four, a free and equal opportunity for all South Africans and South Africans. Our current ground law has lacked time and space for all of us to flourish, for all of us who have been discriminated against.
I'm sorry, with respect, I think those who speak, just remove their mask, otherwise the recording will not be clear. And put it back immediately left.
Unfortunately, after twenty-six years of democracy, this ANC regime has ruined the ground law. And our bright, indoor and white people have been victims of racism, corruption and wrong administration. According to the title of the newspaper, Wednesday, the regime is bankrupt. More than two million workers have lost their jobs in this year, and the economy has grown stronger than the population growth rate. This says, "Our bodies grow heavier every day." No one will now gain any benefit in South Africa, because the ANC has so much insecurity and fear in the land. The Reserve Bank has long said that our economy will improve if the regime trusts in the land. The Regime party earns ten dollars a year. They want the ground law to force, um, a ground, um, ground and land that is white and brown, to be stolen. This is the outcome of the proposed obligation for no land without compensation. This is bloody state poverty. In the West Cape, our DA regime is tied to land reform and doing what they can, but the ANC regime does not get any money for it. What does no land without compensation mean? This means that the state's only land, a slimy RDP or matchbook, of one person, white, black or white, can confiscate, without having to pay for it. Therefore, they can do this to anyone else, maybe their own politics, ANC and AFF figures and stakeholders, without getting a cent from the regime. This is the first time in our history that it is proposed that the ground law's hand fist of rights is required to be enforced. This is a scandal, and it is almost insubstantial to all the rights contained in Article Two of the ground law, and it is also a scandal to the rule of law, which every land in the world is badly and harmful. The obligation slams a huge spiker through the heart of the ground law. In turn, Parliament must force the best municipal authorities in the land, according to the general, to give them money, so that more bodies can be harmed. And it is a tragedy, the obligation, this foolish, but the ANC is now promising to win the municipal election in twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I humbly implore you to tell Parliament that... Mr. Chairman, I humbly implore you to tell Parliament that we...
When time is up.
This gentleman has interrupted me, sir. May I just finish my sentence? You said you'll give me... He interrupted my speech? Not me, not you?
The time is up. You have written notes. Give us the notes. We'll consider...
It's one, it's one sentence.
No, 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 we cannot do that.
As you please, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With respect.
I will take up no more of your time. Thank you.
Can I request that we get back the stickers? And those who have notes must give us the notes.
I suppose so, yes, thank you.
Our approach is to treat all of you equally. So if the time is up, it's up, once we start making exceptions, we are going to violate the principle of equality, and we cannot do that, and we may not do that. Just remove the mask and start, thank you.
My name is Joan Musto. I was born in nineteen fifty-one. Apartheid was three years old. From the time I was old enough to know what it was, I hated it. So in nineteen ninety-four, I was ecstatic to be able to look my fellow South Africans in the eye and say, "We now have a country together and can start to redress those historical wrongs, such as the forced removals of the nationalist party days." I was so proud and am still proud of our country's fine constitution, and especially that now we had a Bill of Rights, spelling out such things as, "No law may permit arbitrary deprivation of property." Arbitrary, meaning at the whim of another. Currently, before my property... Currently, before my property can be expropriated, a court of law has to approve it, taking into account the interests of both the state's needs and my needs. But this amendment turns this upside down. Did you know, all of you who are in favor of it, that expropriation happens from the date of notice? This means that as you read the letter from the state, your property doesn't belong to you anymore. It now belongs to the state. And if you have a tenant, the rent goes to the state. You are dispossessed. So you leave, you go. Where do you go now? And where's the money to buy a new home? Oh, yes. You may dispute this in court, but this is after the event. Note the word "may." What is more to the point is, can you? Can you pay for that? Can you wait some years before a verdict? And who decides what type of property can be expropriated in this manner? It will no longer be decided by the courts, but by parliament. Do you trust the parliament, our parliament? The majority of whose members sat in their well-paid seats allowing our country to be raped in a state capture project? Taking anything without paying for it goes by many names: shoplifting, stealing, robbery, looting, plundering. And here is the greatest worry about it all. If one man's property can be taken in this way, then anyone's can be taken. No longer can any citizen rest secure in that promise in the Bill of Rights. No law may permit arbitrary deprivation of property. This amendment of theft is like a little virus. At first, just here and there, but as it spreads, it will engulf the entire nation. This proposed amendment is amoral and it is downright stupid. It leads to distrust, insecurity, worry, fear, all the ingredients needed to collapse a fragile society such as ours.
Thank you. We need the notes and the sticker. You are all free to use your mother tongue. If it's Kosa, speak in Kosa. We will translate. If you speak Afrikaans, we'll translate into English.
Oh, goedemorgen, meneer die voorzitter. Ik is meneer Nilo. Ik is daar van Nijssna. Die speelplek was van die rijk mensen. Ik is daar van hand op en ik ben blij daar in honing. Ik bewort aan die economical freedom fighters en ik is die organiserder van die strijk van de EFF. Attempts to resolve the land question through willing buyer, willing seller, it fail us. Because of the Act of 1930, the Native Land Act, the 1963 Native Land Act Trust Act and the 1951 Group Act is dismaly fail us. Without land, the promise of equality is meaningless. We are there for nothing without the land. Now, Mister Chair, dit is wat ons zegt. Dat die staat die custodiums van die grond moet wees. Dat alle natuurlijke hulbronnen, zoals water, mineralen, aan die staat in grond aan die staat moet bewort. Dat die grond equally verspreid moet worden aan onze mensen. Wat niks het niet. Voor grond, voor voedsel en ook voor food security en voor human settlement en ook voor commerciële gebruik. Dit is hoe kom je grondgebruik moet worden. Als ons die dit gaan doen niet, dan gaan ons onze mensen fail en ons gaan onze mensen dismaly fail. Zo ons zegt dat die staat met pand om een alle moet die custodiums wees. Alle natuurlijke hulbronnen moet aan die staat bewort en dat die grond equally verspreid moet worden aan onze mensen. Waar je dank je.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Parliamentarians. My name is Jovan Branders. I'm the chairperson of the ANC in this Southern Cape region and welcome to our region. We would also like to take the opportunity to thank you for coming to this beautiful place called Mossel Bay. I will fail in my duty if I don't give you some small historical background in terms of Mossel Bay that relates to the land issue within our country. Four decades ago, the first Maite was shot down, a coy, was shot down in Mossel Bay by the Almeida. And that might make it very significant today for us who are staying in this town. I would also like to take the opportunity to say to other political parties to take the emotion out of this and focus on what have really happened in the past and how do we address the imbalances of the past. This euphoria of creating boogeyman politics should stop by now. So our submission as the ANC regional executive is very clear. I, Jovan Branders, chairperson of the ANC region within this region, that the ANC supports expropriation of land as a just and equitable process to restore the dignity of our people in addressing the land question and the expropriation of land without compensation is part of that process. We are convinced by evidence that the willing buyer, willing seller model did not work. For the ANC land reform is about readdressing historical injustices and deposition of the black majority. In black, we are making it very clear that it is Indian, colored and African. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, to promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC land reform program provides a radical way to address the land question and build productive assets for our people and ensure food security and kickstart and ignite the agricultural revolution that the president frequently talk about. On one, Mister Chairperson?
Time up.
On one?
Just submit your document. We will take note of everything that is in the document.
Thank you.
There is a request from the back that what was said in Afrikaans earlier should be translated. So before the next speaker, I will allow our interpreters just to interpret that proceed.
G'day, Chairperson, members. My name is Brian Musto. I'm a legal and financial expert. And I just want to say that for many years, I fought for an equal society and future for everyone in South Africa. And after 26 years of democracy, it seems as though the ANC has gone astray. They are excluding the minorities. They're taking land away from the coloreds, the Indians and the whites. We have noticed that in the last period, the economy has taken quite a dip and lots of job opportunities were lost. We are not getting a lot of investments into the country because of the uncertainty that is brought about by the ANC government. People only invest in the country when there is certainty. And that is what we need. Now you want to come and amend section 25, which is tantamount to theft. The DA in this country wants to improve the lives of all the people. Now you come and you want to amend section 25. And this means that not only land will be expropriated, but anything that belongs to you, like your house and so forth, can be taken away from you, even your RDP house, and be given to whoever the government deems that they want to do so. And this is against all our laws and especially against our Bill of Rights. What we need is for the government to give the provinces more money so that they can see to the needs of the people. I thank you. Then there was a speaker from the EFF who spoke English and Afrikaans. What he said in Afrikaans was the following. He said that he is Mister Low and is from Nijssna and is an EFF member and I think he's a regional organizer. He says that what we want the state to do is that the state be the custodian of the land and also of all the natural resources. All the minerals and everything must belong to the state. And then the state must decide to equally distribute this to all the people in the country for commercial use, for land shortage, for food security and so forth. I thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Mitali Duka. I'm coming from Bitou. I'm a chairperson of the EFF on the provincial level. I will start by saying, as this document states, section 25. I'm not free, first of all, because of this document I see is just representing, this is an English document, and Afrikaans document, I don't see a Kosa document. It's fine. First of all, I'm here. I'm standing on behalf of a Rastafarian. As a Rastafarian, we are oppressed. Because when the Rastafarian going to dig herbs in the forest, siabanjwa. So all the forests are under sand pucks. So none of the forests that is free for a Rastafarian or a traditional healers to get herbs. So it means us as a black people, we are not affording a medical aid, all of us. So abanebe to bapila ngoku ngoku fumana amayeza es Kosa ema llatini. So lonto inbonisa ogut as kululegaanga. Inkululego yetu ilimitet. So ngaske inkululego yetu ivulelegefo wonke umtu omnyama. Ngoba amayeza espila ngao. Agasensi so wonke sibe siawazi ukafforda impilo yomtu omnyama. So singenza njani na oguzee umtu akwazi ukukululega ngoku ya ellatini ache amayeza ngendela angone la ukba akengayo. I mean, ogusbi ni? Thank you.
I will interpret the Kosa part, Chairperson, with your permission. At the forest, as the Rastafarians, we get arrested. We cannot go and harvest herbs as some of us can't afford to pay medical aid. Some of us solely depend on traditional herbs which are found in the forest. So sand park does not allow us or give us permission to go and harvest those herbs. So we really wish that we be given that freedom of going at any time to the forest and harvest the herbs so that we can be equally healed like those who can afford medical aid.
We shall come to these two rows. Can we take hands from these two rows? We will, time permitting, will come back because I see there are people who have just come in per agreement that there will be people outside who will come in. So you don't have to raise your hand now. We're still going to exhaust the process. Lower your hand. No, not now. Now we are concentrating on these two rows. We'll come back then. Any hands here? Yeah. No, 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 no. These two rows here, these two rows here. Maybe give that man, because there's only one hand, so that... Okay. Or there's another hand there at the back. And please, all of you, come to the main mic here. Those who have to speak. And please sanitize after each and every speaker.
Oh, goedemorgen, meneer die voorzitter. Ik kan Engels praat so klein beetje klausag, maar ik gaan wat ik adres in Afrikaans adres. Mijn naam is Jafte George Meyers. Gestationeer te Nijssna. Ik had groot geworden in Willemoor. Ik ken apartheid. Ik weet wat ons der gemaak het. Ik had gezien dat één persoon tien plaatsen tot twintig plaatsen besitte. Ja, 1994, het angebreek. En in 1996, het ons een beetje verlichting gekrijg, maar het was nog niet genoeg niet. En vandaag kan ik hier staan en zeg dat ik een lid is van die machtige EFF. En dat de EFF die aanvoerders van hier die wet om hier die klausiele te veranderen. In die zin dat één persoon één gerechtig moet wees tot één eiendom. Dat grond beskikbaar moet wees zonder vergoeding voor mensen wat behoefte is. Ik staan hier en ik is ondersteuner dat hier die afdeling van die Groentwet drastisch en onmiddellijk hij roep moet worden zodat ons mensen uit hulle honger nooit uit verliggen kan worden. Zodat ons mensen gerechtig kan wees op grond van hellaaien. Zodat ons mensen in hier die land kan tot op de high flag kom. Dat helle ook kan weet dat helle is ook mensen van Zuid-Afrika. En daarom staan ik vandaag hier als een lid van die machtige EFF. En vandaag staan ik hier om te zeggen dat parlement onmiddellijk hier die wet, hier die klausiele... here the clauses, must change. Otherwise, South Africa's people, not to the high ground, where they will say, I am a supporter of South Africa, no. One man, one ground, that people, their heritage can support. That people know, I know, I come from the place where our people, ones for him, the nadiel the people, as people have known, fun, who can boor.
Bye, thank you. Bye, thank you. Bye, thank you. Can I tell you something?
Good day, Jefferson. I can speak English and a little bit of Iskosa, but today I want to speak Afrikaans. My name is George Myers and I'm from Nijssna, but I grew up in Wollomoo. I know apartheid and I know during the apartheid years, one person would own more than ten farms. I'm here to say that I'm a member of the EFF and they are the ones who started speaking about the amendment of Section 25. I say that we should have one person only having the ownership of one property. And we also stand for the people who are needy, that they can get property, they can get land without paying for it. Section 25 must be amended so that the people in our land can be saved from hunger, that they can have land and move to a level where it can be understood that they are fully citizens of South Africa. Parliament must amend this section as soon as possible or else the normal South African cannot reach that stage where they can say that they are also part of South Africa. I say one man, one property, and this must be done as quickly as possible. And farms must be given to our people because I come from a community who knew how to farm and what they need now is land. Thank you.
Next speaker. We must sanitize the mic, please.
Good morning, Jefferson and the crew. My name is Tembingosi Dasi from Nijssna. I'm a proudly EFF member and I am a regional technical official. I coach the young kids' football. Before nineteen ninety-four, white apartheid people noted that they don't have any pain of them to be the president of this country. Because already knew that they cemented the land belonged to them. Whereas this land belonged to the black people. The South African Constitution is also stating that every South African is having a right to the freedom of the democracy in this country. This Section 25 is treating us the same. The oppressor, the oppression, the victims and the perpetrators. About eighty percent of South African land is owned by private owners where fifteen percent is state-owned. Seventy-two percent is owned by white people. The same white people decide how much they can, specific land be compensated. The state must be the custodians of all the land in South Africa and it must be owned by South Africans. The state must also be the custodians of the national resources in South Africa. The majority of our people did not get any chance to claim the land that belonged to them. Since nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen eighty-five, we were disposed from our land. If those points are not taken in consideration, then we must know, we will fail our people. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good morning. But of course, observe to the commissioners of the EFF. My name is Lupumla Tom from George. I'm a member of the provincial command team in the Western Cape. I hereby declare that I support the amendment of Section 25 of the Constitution to allow aspiration of land without compensation. This amendment is crucial for the de-uh, de-chronization of our society, for guaranteed redress, for colonial and apartheid land dispossession and for ensuring incredible distribution of land in South Africa. I also say in Section 25, we should remove Section 3 and replace it. Also remove subsections number seven. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and measures of achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination, provided that any departure from provision of this section, it is accordions with the provision of Section thirty-six point one. There is a bill of rights in Section 25 that says, what does it say, when it's Section 25 of the Constitution says, no one should be deprived their property. It means the oppressor and oppressed should be equal. Also to treat the deposess and the deposed equal. Till today, seventy-two percent of the land is owned by white people. Four percent is owned by black people. Six percent is owned by coloreds. Fifteen percent of the land is owned by Indians. Only seven thousand two hundred whites in those seventy-two percent is owned by white people. What does it say? Only those who are rich can control everything that is on our land. So I'm here to support that. Section 25 of the Constitution should be amended. Thank you.
Kajts. Good morning. Good day. Moleni. I'm a wife man, damons, from Yavakwais, the Outzoring. I stand here and I see that the same with the leader, that the folk did not sit. I still feel the leader, the leader still. Because here I stand, and sit the leader. That will I get a lot of awareness, before I was a leader. The first folk, and the first folk of the land, from the west to the north, the east to the south. My dear, the coys, and I as our leader. His wishes, his wishes, give way, what I see in Zaga, it is there. From sixteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen nineteen, and the five, five, five parliamente, coysan was not there, no. How come, no? Because I'm mistaken, the regierung, that I helped him in the land, the right to him to say, and the hand to the regier. I'm a coysan, so my folk, I'm blind, sin, platter, okay? So no electricity, as there's water, no. But today, I'm sitting the leader. And as I'm so good, what I'm a nadiel in, my dear. I'm glad to hear it, my men are wise, I'm not going to be aware. Plastik, professional, professional. But I can see that, outzoring took a comment, and they come, "Kijk, what the armoeder of people live." Today, we're going to sit the leader, for the ground, so no approval. The coy and the san, today, now, no, for the ground, what it's not named. The regierung must better look, that the ware and the right to layers, that come. I think it's all the way, that they know, we're the regier. The coy must be a king, no. The coy must be here, no, that it come. As to, that's a talent. Let me pause it, I say, nineteen twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, the twa of the town, amplentier, no. I heard my, my president, he said he will turn again. That it twa of the town, for the coy is an, amplent, amplentest. I see the first folk, I see the first folk in the land. How come I'm a, I'm a here, and how come I'm a, I'm a word, no?
Bye, thank you, for talking as a belief.
Good day to the panel and everyone here. I am Damons from Outzon. I am very disappointed that none of the members of my society are represented on the panel here today. The coy and the san are the first people in this country. In five parliaments, there has been no representation of either the coy or the san and even in the sixth parliament. We are just not being recognized by the government. I am representative of the coy and the san people, but I live in a shack with no running water. I'm supposed to give input on this amendment, but we live in poverty with nothing. The coy and san are still worried and still crying about the land that had been taken from them that has not been given back to them. The coy and the san must be given back that which is theirs by the fact that they are the first nation of this country. They should be represented at government level. They would know how to govern this country too. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Moleni. Hey, I'm a woman, doing good, this is very nice. I support the amendment of Section 25. We want to see the expropriation of the land without compensation and the government to be the custodian of the land. The government should not rent any land or buy any land. And the government must be the custodian of all natural resources. The plus minus seventy-two percent of the people who owns the land do not cater for our people and the poor of the poorest. When our people are in need, they run to the government for basic needs like water, food, job, education, land. They run to the government, not to the capitalist, the people who owns most of the land. The land was not bought, why should the state buy it? The land was taken through blood. I thank you.
Good day. I'm Nicholas Boyson. I'm active as of the DA. A Section 25. The ground law makes it, makes it deadly, what is done, no, for unending. Die probleem is niet, is niet zozeer, die wetgeving. Die probleem is dat die einse regering heeft niks bijna gedoneerd in die twintig jaar. Hij kon het duidelijk worden, maar die kooi ook uitgestippelen hier. Dat is waar die probleem ligt. Oos kan misschien een mens een stuk grond geven om te gaan boeren. En hij die kaart en transport niet. Hij kan niet gaan boeren als hij die kaart en transport niet. Hoe ga jij naar die bank toe gaan? Om voor jou een lening te krijgen? Hoe ga jij voor jou een bankrekening maken? Ik zei weer, oes is een partij van wet en orde. Als dit, als hier goed een plek gebracht wordt. Dat jou, je moet grond krijgen. Maar, samen moet het gaan. De kaart en transport. Ik bedank jullie.
Bedankt voor het vertolken als het lief.
Ik ben Nicholas Boisen. En ik ben een vertegenwoordiger van de DA. De constitution is erg duidelijk over wat moet gedaan worden. Het is niet nodig om de constitution te amenden. Het is duidelijk wat moet gedaan worden voor expropriatie. Het probleem hier is niet de constitution, maar rather de regering. Je kan mensen land geven, maar je geeft ze titeldienst. Hoe zijn ze opgevallen op deze land? Als ze niet kunnen gaan naar de bank om een lening te krijgen of om deze property te leverageren in een of andere manier als ze niet hebben eigendom? We zijn rechtvaardige burgers, ja. Maar wat ik zeg, is dat als we vallen en als we vallen proper, we hebben titeldienst. Bedankt.
Nergens speaker, misschien?
Goeiemorgen. Mijn naam is Belinda Rensberg. Ik is de secretaresse van de Black John Gethos in Otsoring. Ik vertegenwoordig alle mensen. Ik hoor die woord van land gepraat. Oos is kooi son. Dat is onze land. Maar weet jullie, ik wens, zoals die hoofdman ook gezegd heeft, ik wens dat die ooggeleerd is wat zo aanboos zit. Dat één keer net wil terugkomen naar ons toe, af aarde toe. En samen ons gaan loop en die plakkerskampen waar ons blij mensen, ons blij onderhagelijke omstandigheden. Onze oude mensen, onze kinderen. Die land, die grond, wat aan ons bewort, kan ons nu bewonen? Hoe komt die? Van de regering, hij in het. Die mensen blij onderhagelijke omstandigheden. Onze sanitatie, ja, waar ons blij niet. Onze die kranen niet. Onze die kracht niet. Onze mensen zijn plekke brand af. Onze kinderen gaan dood. Alle sterren. Our elders are dying in the shacks. What is the government doing about it? Absolutely nothing. They don't even have the decency to just come down and just for once come walk in our shoes, walk in our paths and see how we are living and see what we as the community, we're the persons that put them there, what we are going through. But they don't do that. Zo mensen zijn blij, ik zei ook zoals die hoofdman gezegd heeft, ik wens die minister van Behizen was nou hier, zodat hij kan werken en dat hij kan verstaan wat aan gaat, hoe onze mensen blij. Als ze blij gedanken aan onze mensen. Dat is onze land, onze kooi son. Dat is onze land. Dat is de regerms land. Baja dankje.
Bedankt voor het vertolken als het lief.
Goeidag, members. Mijn naam is Belinda Rensberg. Ik ben van Otsong en ik vertegenwoordig mensen die daar in shack's leven enzovoort. Het eerste wat ik wil zeggen is, zoals onze chef al eerder zei, dat we zijn kooi en son en de land is onszelf. Maar wat ik echt wil, is de educateerde mensen die daar zitten, de mensen die ons vertegenwoordigen op regeringseenheid, dat je komt en kijkt en ziet de situaties waarin we leven. We hebben geen taps, geen running water, geen beschadiging, sanitatie. En dit is hoe onze mensen leven. Zoals onze chef al eerder zei, hij wist dat de minister van huisdiensten hier was zodat hij kan komen en zien wat de plek van onze mensen echt is. Bedankt.
Nergens speaker? Ik ga naar deze kant. Ik geef jullie stickers. Alle handen die op zijn, geef ze stickers. We hebben alle handen genomen. Er is een mic rechts in de front. Laten de eerste speaker komen. Laten we niet vergeten om de drie minuut regel te observeren. En de sanitie na elkaar, elke en elke speaker.
Goeidag, president. Mijn naam is Kobisa Kukusha, van Bido. origineel van Titekama. Ik vraag het staat om de negotiations die ze hebben met die vallen in Titekama. Wanneer we vormd werden, werden we nooit geld gegeven. Waarom moeten ze geld krijgen? Ik wil terugkomen. Die thiefen moeten mijn land laten. Als ze niet pleegvuldig leven, dan leven ze de manier die we hebben laten. En de land van Amam Feengu, die staat onder het staat, moet teruggegeven aan Amam Feengu. Ik bedank jullie.
Nergens speaker?
Goedavond. Ik bid jullie allemaal. In de naam van de EFF. Ik bid Julius Malema, de president van de EFF. Mijn naam is Aaron Temingosindwengogo. Ik sta hier voor de EFF. Amendement van de constitution. Ik declareer hierdoor dat ik de amendement van section 25 van de constitution tovert voor expropriatie van land zonder compensatie. Ik submit dat de amendement van section 25 van de constitution moet zien volgen. 25 punt property. Nummer één. Het staat, inklusief parlement, executive en judiciary, moet een obligatie hebben om redressen te doen van de verleden door een actie van de wet die zal redressen en equitable redistribution van alle ressources. Nummer twee. Property kan worden expropriëerd met compensatie. A, alleen in termen van de wet of generale applicatie. B, of een publieke doel of in het publieke interesse. Remoef section drie en vervang met nummer drie. Het staat moeten beheersen van de natuurlijke ressources van Zuid-Afrika, inklusief van land, mineralische ressources en water. En relevant legislatie moet worden gesteld om duidelijk te definiëren en contextueel staatbeheersing van natuurlijke ressources. Voor de doel van deze sección. A, het publieke interesse, inklusief de nationen betrekking op landreform en om te reformen om equitable toegang te geven tot alle natuurlijke ressources van Zuid-Afrika. En B, property is niet beperkt op land. Nummer vijf. Het staat moeten reasonable legislative en andere middelen binnen zijn toegankelijke ressources.
Bedankt.
Bedankt heel veel.
Cheer en alle mensen naast je. Ik ben Salvatore Manas. Ik ben de president van de Tarke Klaimens Komitee in Moser Bay. Ik vertolken voor de politici. Dank God voor dat, want het job is te moeilijk. Ik ben niet in staat om het te handelen. Bedankt heel veel voor je op de tafels. Ik ga mijn precious drie minuten niet verbergen door naar de past te gaan. De past is daar, het is gebeurd. En dit regerme is proberen om dit probleem te aanpakken. Van 1652, wanneer we zijn gegaan van de land. De Engelsen kwamen en ze hebben het formaliseerd. En de armoeders krijgen nu de beloning voor het. Maar de Engelsen hebben het formaliseerd. Dat is nu voor Helen Zeller. Voor Helen Zeller, ja. We hebben in Moser Bay al sinds we zijn weggegaan van onze gebied in de jaren zestig om te redressen de ongewicht en de dingen die ze ons hebben gedaan in Moser Bay. En wanneer ik de president hier ben, was het een ophield strijd. En de moser bay municipaliteit zag ons op. Dat was de ding die het moest horen.
Kula mshaba sepa. Uthatha ondi zeleyo kunamatla shaya uulandwa kapshunge khae. Kuswai terrorist andi zunge inake abo. Endi kuzeleyo dakshane yambisana nokokba umshaba maubuye ele e bantu inbao. Ane? Sisatenga. Asukuthatha ngendelo wathathwe ngayo kokoko betu. Ukwenjenge sisatenga. Futi ndipinda nbeni question mark. Kuteni ngooku kuza ufuna kasi kati silebasa kwenza antoni ngomshaba wetu. Wathathwe kuti kapshungu kokoko betu ngooku ufuna kasi pinda sika kiseba sisa kwenza antoni. Iwaba wathathwe kapshungu ngekazi. Wapinda watiso utatiwe kapshungu ngekazi abanda ba utatileyo bafika benzi miteto efane lebona yakine zelatina. Ngoku klasifuna maupinda buyele kutu umshaba wetu ufuna kasi kati sisebasa kwenza antoni. Sashele kuwa, saspila. Tipebe.
Sebonga.
Greetings to all the leaders. Chairperson, my name is Kwele Luakwai. I've got many surnames, but I'll only stick to that one. I grew up in Port Elizabeth, but I don't know where I originally came from. I know oppression and I experienced oppression. My father or the man who gave birth to me was called a terrorist. He would be taken from time to time and get arrested because he was perceived to be a terrorist. I won't dwell on that. And furthermore, I want to say that I support that the land must be restored to its rightful owners. And we don't need to explain as to why do we need that. We are still pleading now that land must be restored. But the land was taken through killing of people, shedding of blood, but we don't want to go to that. But I'm only disturbed by the people who wanted us to explain as to why should the land be given back to its rightful owners. That is my submission.
Thank you. Next speaker. What's happening now? I see now there's another process going on. What's happening?
Good afternoon, Professor Mcheka, panel and fellow South Africans. My name is Arne Greiling. I'm the regional coordinator of Afri Forum. We are against the changing and the amendment of section twenty-five, and this is our submission. The restitution of the Land Rights Act of nineteen ninety-four makes it possible for people to submit claims for land that they had been deprived of as a result of racial discrimination such as forced removals. Eighty-two percent of land claims have been for urban land rather than rural land. Over ninety percent of those who had submitted land claims indicated that they were not really interested in owning farmland and they would rather prefer money as compensation. The government has already spent more than fifty billion on land reform with very little results. The Muslanti Commission found the government inefficiency and the corruption are major barriers to effective land reform. Not only are the figures of white land ownership that are often used inflated, the problem is that the government is dedicated to reducing the amount of land owned by white people, while this has not been seen as a priority by the major majority of our fellow black South Africans. This is proven by the fast pace at which black South Africans are moving to urban spaces. Black South Africans, more than any other group, appear to want to live in cities rather than in rural areas. According to the government, almost eight million hectares have already been distributed to the black people. However, it also admitted that more than ninety percent of farms distributed to new black communities has failed and had usually very quickly turned into something else. That is because the government failed these people with support. We have no confidence that this new process that wants, that the people wants to see is also gonna fail. Please just rectify what is wrong rather than change it with another thing and another process that also is not gonna work. I thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker. Only people who have stickers, please.
Dizawubuli sa kuwe professor, na kuwe yonge itumiyako asse parliament. Ika malam nguonga Luke from Echotch sugai Tembalito. Panzi kumbuto iense, bendikela ubuzo professor ngendo. Esinokuyenza ilogishi yetu ukuse indoba nasifumane ifandings. Uziama ugothi indoba na zonge itampings on sisi chike tu. Bana ibezizi indola kisi sisi chike, ibezikraches, ibezikartins, netjims. So indobe sifunuyazi indoba nasimenza kanza ugothi bana siwazufumana ifanding. Ugothi indoba nasibeno kwazukubegaka kabambili diabulela.
Interpretation, please.
Greetings to professor and the delegation. I am Nwonga Luke from Tembalito, George. My need is just to ask as to how can we get funding for the cartings that we are doing in George? That's all that we want is direction towards getting that funding. Because we try to formalize whatever we're doing there with the carting, but we don't have enough funding.
Next speaker, please.
Diabulela. Ika malam Gulunga Peters, di sugai Echotch, Tembalito. Diabulela eltu batochondilfumene. Mnandi zautaila toch bana ugovernmenti angalalisinga ati toch. Kwekandelo lavanda baje. Sisoko leke ufulana umshaba, sifuna umshaba ukuze sileme ngo bage. Umile ugovernmenti sitivuka uzenzele. Ikoli kiya isuga aba ngooku simana sijonga indau e tanswa kuuso. Siklinu zonileme kuuso. Ngoku kesi kaila keba ugovernment asengede ngomshaba. Umshaba sawazba ngoktini. Kungatwa sisa wenzani umshaba. Kui kandelo loka agriculture naye akasengede ngo ba siambi leke soufuna iisponsa ugothi asengede uagriculture. Askale loba asnau umshaba, umshaba funeke abese kamenle. Kosi akrela keba ugovernment asengede ngomshaba, oba sawazba sawenzani na umshaba. Ukuze sisenza kozonke zingingi, kuba ge umsebenza auko. Ngoku ufuna kasi vuka sizenzele, sileme elo kapichuniana. Lipelle, litengi, siltenge se lipelle ngooku sifune silenda another six months. Ukuze kule asospinaj, sakrela kebe tunali kanisengede kosi.
Thank you. Do we still have hands this? I think we need that interpretation.
I am Lunga Peters from Tembalito, George. I ask the government not to toy with us. We are very serious in need of land like my previous colleague who spoke before me. We struggle to get land to practice our gardening. The government is saying that we should wake up and do things ourselves ukuze zenzele. That's what we are trying to do, but we don't have land. We only rely on the dumping sites that we are used for six months. And after that, we get, the land gets exhausted. We don't have enough space to plow whatever needs to follow the other. Because if, for instance, we plow carriages, it lasts for six months. And after that, it's only after six months that we are allowed to plow again. When we go to agriculture to get funding, we are asked to have a land that we own. But we don't have any land for them to get, to give us some kind of support. We really pleading that the government should assist us, that we need land to plow. As you have said, to wake up and do it ourselves.
Next speaker.
Greetings to everyone, special greeting to my commissar. Standing in front of you is Immanuel Mosi, proud EFF member and SRC deputy president. Chairperson, I find it odd that we are still debating that section twenty-five must be amended. I think for now, anyone who doesn't understand that is either must get their head examined. When these criminals came here, they raped, stole and murdered our people. So therefore, why must we compensate thieves and thugs? We cannot do that. The descendants of the colonizers are so arrogant that they want us to negotiate the fact that the land must be given back to us. So this process, we are following it just because it's a democratic process. Otherwise, this land belongs to us. If you are now going to sleep in that parliament, we are going to take the land forcefully doing so. But what needs to be addressed, Chairperson, is that the land must be under the custodianship of the state whereby we avoid the situation that the colonizers come back and re-colonize us in a different type of format. So the state must be in charge of the land so that we do not, we do not miss this land development. So what needs to happen because of the current government that is sitting now are crooks. We need to establish a chapter nine institution that would be a watchdog in terms of how these processes are going to take place and also how land is redistributed for equal use. And this land, Chairperson, must reflect the demographics of this country. The black people are in majority. So it makes common sense for black people to own a bigger portion of the land because they are the majority. And once we talk about majority, also speaking about the women because they are also in majority. So they must have the right and also be entitled to own the land. What also needs to happen, Chairperson, is that the state must make laws in terms of accelerating this process and ensuring that each and every South African must get a piece of land. We cannot have a situation whereby we are told that we are equally as if we are not landowners. I'm a landless landowner in my own land and I find that extremely odd. But as I said, Chairperson, we are just following this process to have a proceeding that is very peacefully. Otherwise, if you are going to sleep in that parliament, we are going to take this land by force. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, everyone. My name is Makina Nakola from George. I support the amendment of the constitution, section five, without conversation. Because doing that is to restore the dignity of the black people. Doing that is to correct the injustice of the past. Because when the white people arrived here in South Africa, they killed black people. They took the land by force. There was no negotiations or a process of communication and discussion like we do now. And then I feel like this process of giving back the land to the black people is long overdue. Because it was supposed to happen immediately after the inclusion of election in nineteen ninety-four to restore the, to restore the black, the black people's dignity of those who were humiliated and then those discriminated against during the apartheid and before then. And then the section, in the same section, the subsection seven must be permanently removed. Because that one alone is confusing us. Okay, I thank you.
Thank you. We are, oh, there's somebody, there are two people with stickers. That will be the end from this side. We will go to the back. Okay. Yeah, there, there.
Chalinga bambele, nesukeba sakwesukongile. Tizawmageno sbulise lakuni, nonke ngoklinganayo. Ika magen ngetiisa kakuligaa. Umshali Echotch, Etembalito, mfa mosakasayo, ongachatinduin. Tiwa ngushala oge wefora mia basal. Be sebe, le zamansi nokutulolele inje, Echotch. Chalinga bambele, tinolo iyiko. Ulo iyiko lamlu nyelutala amazu otaleka ufula lumshanga. Ute, you're going to treat us equally, uwaspatangoklinganayo. Naantoke ikala lam apoli koyo kane, kula amazu depuma kuwe. Kuba aband, kuba ongachonga longilis. Lililashili temba uholmentu spate. We have lost the trust ugovernment esamfote la. Koba isisat, injela eni zizisanga ayo izinto ebantu inuholmentu wetu. Koga wefote loba etembi se wongu mto kama lunga roalinganayo. Odwinje la isistim, shlegas, leni zisanga ayo izinto ebantu in. Yoku shuti sa omto se shu, alambo de lam. Na ngooku umeshine ika ma elitipartisanic democracy. Ika ma eni ngayasin ngaliza mjanza outi lisese nyeli sokuti tinabando bamnyam. Abanga chata, abanga meloanga imibuto yo politiko, paie parliament. Ba anambuto yo politiko ndililungu la wamna dalashite. Ke itige mshlegas umbozoa, intoni tevolokwenza kuba nibuisi Tembalito, kunu holument. Injela la yokuwenza kermshlegas ini, ukuva sonke sizboni silingana kuka malunge. Kungabiko omto okulevele pezu, kubeko omto osesanz. Injela la yoku silingani sa eyipige, iwaba isistimema isekenziswe. Social dialogue ingogo yesin injela okulingana kaband. Lo umnenimshaba uza utatiwala umshaba ngapandla wembuye gas. Na amjengachatinduin ndipandakutelo umshaba okok. Funaga sidegue kulevele eh nyasizwe silingana kasigulengi. Indo etige ngo, umnenimshaba, lo wile na uza okspropiet umshaba without conversation. Na lo unelunge lolo kuba engena umshaba. Ufunaga bobabi inababa nbadewa kulevele yayelu umnenimshaba utatiwala umshaba. Maganga kutuangi skongo usipai. Magade yingale nyaya le process. Ilendo siti kisistimiyako yichind, inga yoku shu se shu. Yaya kermshlegas owo krazishwani chwe, indi maydiya njiwenga band.
Sebonga Baba.
Greetings, Chairperson and your delegation. I am Tisa from George. I'm an emerging farmer and the chairperson of a community forum of water sanitation. My fear is that you promised to treat us equally, but that's where my problem is. Because we have lost the trust on the government of the day due to the way the government deliver whatever needs to be delivered to us. You make the rich to be richer, the rich to be richer and the poor to be poorer. And I, I personally have, does not belong to any party. But there's a saying that speaks about participatory democracy, but I don't belong to any party. And I'm very afraid about that. I want to ask your chairperson, what can be done to restore the trust that the people have lost on the government? There should be a social dialogue where the landowners and those who need land can sit together and discuss as to how to resolve the issue of land. They should not be forcefully removed from the land. They should be part of the decision-making and casting the way forward as to how to address the issue of the land. Thank you.
Next speaker. There was a lady who came to the front here. Didn't she have the sticker?
No, it doesn't have a sticker.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Chairperson. I am a humble listener. I also respect the women. If she's got a burning issue, I'm prepared to forfeit my chance and give her my, or save my three minutes with her. Okokala, chalinga bambele tochanandi ve abantu be ngumse la papanle. Nguwini lezo yi, Enaysna, kubonje boonge agricultural organization, yokshala pa Enaysna. Kosi sugaku te simke ngoseven Enaysna, kangesike. And as nobas, we call any refreshments. We are coming from Enaysna. We have not taken anything from our stomach. Some of us wake up six o'clock, seven o'clock. But we are used when we come to meet, to meetings of this nature to get refreshments, whether it's a piece of bread or anything else. But I leave that with you. It's not my duty to eat, but usually to conquer the mind. Secondly, let me chip in here. I'm mandated to be here by my organization. First of all, we support this bill wholeheartedly. But supporting it, we support it with the proviso that there must be a process that will lead to create intergovernmental relations in terms of land auditing. Because we cannot say we support the bill, we start understanding the nitty-gritties. Remember, we are from different local municipalities which are governed by national government. And therefore, if the land audit is clear, we will be able to understand who owns what. They used to say who's zooming who. Because we must be able to say, Mister so-and-so or Mister Kukumur has got ten farms. So what do we do about those ten farms? So that's the land audit issue that we are talking about. And we appreciate the fact that the Atthor Committee has done tremendous job, including all the parliamentarians. Some of them are anomaly disappointing, you know, but it's not an issue. The issue, the work has been done irrespective of what. The second, the second issue that we support, we are supporting, we want to propose the fact that government, as government, as our government, must be, the national, must be the custodian of all natural resources, the land in particular, because the land is a very sensitive issue. So those nitty-gritties must be dealt with. Let me then finish up. How will this be done? Because...
Thank you and give us notes and then we'll take that into account, what we have not said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll interpret. Okay. Next speaker.
Greetings, everyone. Chairperson, leadership of the EFF, the commissars. My name is Bongani Snandi. I'm from here in Mosul Bay Watu. Chairperson, ina tango serious. Gochonga wa. Because abati, you know, apa ekraun, si sikonese kileka ku. According umshaba, because umshaba, awazu create a job without land. There's no way. Because nokute suthenga ayo, kusuka emshaba inu kialin. So umshaba sawathatingan. And me, Bongani, I will desire fail, zaufail umshaba. Sawathatingan, tumzuluka ana kabiiko. Because diabonba ina tulendo wa yebasa benspatala band, wathatili umshaba nginka ni bona. Izushebenza ugothi land. Because, and iboni indoba beses negotiate. Because the parliament, yavumba, is okay, ba feili, is nefeili, is feili. Funaga sakelisint, kafana sakelisint lapumaspa luteksera namshaba. Kafana sinto wege ngukuyas kup. Sitini. Sawathatingan, benchilo pa Watu, diwa kareli kominiti, ifever ubon umshaba, utat. And sawathatingan, kuba ni funa umshaba, sawathat. And zaufaila kenda na lon. I'm proud for kuba iseli lungu le EFF. Because from nineteen ninety-four, ni feili likoteessa. And Lon do, invisakapshungu, koba obawa umkulu obalo lelis. Aba vel, namshaji. Kuba umkulu amu as one of them, pata ika malaga liku. Invisakapshungu land. So, is feili le Chairperson, kakul. Yani kela, yankaramele, tella Mr. President, must correct this thing. Please. I'm pleading with you, Chairperson. You must go and amend this constitution and the state must be custodian of mineral, namansi yonkindo.
Thank you very much. There's a lady in front here and another one with a beret, a red beret. I think she wanted to speak. That lady there, did you want to speak? Yeah, that lady. She doesn't want to speak. Okay. Yeah, let her speak and those will be the last hands. I think the people at the back are very patient, very disciplined. We need to move back to them now.
Sorry, Chairperson. Can I interpret a specific version of the last speaker? Thank you, Chairperson.
You don't seem to be serious, Chairperson. You failed us. Because you, you can't create job without land and everything that we depend on has come from, from the land. We will forcefully take the land if you don't deliver to us. Because you, as the government, you failed us to a great extent. You started failing us during the co-dessa negotiations and even in nineteen ninety-four. I am personally, as Bongani, prepared to die for the land. So if you don't deliver, as you admitted that you failed, because you even can't provide us with the RDP houses because you don't have enough land, we will take the land forcefully and we are prepared to die for it.
Thank you. Proceed.
Diabulela basal ba ngapambili, koglinganayo. Ika malungusnazo ifan ngokuyeman, tilabaka wotuwa nape Mosul Bay. Mnandi zo tetangendo edingaza ngendi bonye ndisatete ndo ndibona yu ngoku esine esichu amesine ngamenenayo, yu wesape Mosul Bay. Apa Mosul Bay, umshaba nje ngoba sisi sitcho, umzakele tinawi full present as ukononaba. Sisi tinawa, tinawa uwe tuapa nje kwa umenyan tifundwe benkola, usifaleli. When the final sifleni meeting was etandwa bana ufunukwenzi post office, it passed out that si ngalbe sisi zetaun. Utukuta kasifunuka gletaun. Si peles bakalela basal ba mabanjovepa, glenda wafunuka kakuhi post office. Si peles, bakta le labaxalba, mabanjovepa, klen da wafunu kwa kaku i post office, kuba, si funi post office ipana, ti na, si funi ndauzolha. Sizalale post office? No, sizalale post office. Yes, we do need i post office, but ikona ike mosile i lapeta. Number two, sina ma farmer, asa kulayo, ape Mosul Bay. Aba, ota ta ba, abafuya akua, ba fuyezin toni. Ufunu uchata kwalenda, uza, boze, ba, zulele kuzifama, kala, skozu chalanee farmer, pamkwa, pakatwa band. So ba cha taba, boba chalanangapa ya, jebutkalunge, no, ya Bona mospa, la ndawie akua. Baxalapa, ufuna kwa yo na, yuti, nitima sekinina, kenda wetu. Inisizwa si mnyama sisifa, niko, na ni keli pani, ngabanda ba mnyama, na kan. Ay kunkapa kwa manja, kwa nelebe tuni, siya uchata kengo, anita disneke mos. Kubo, asbata te ni fighters, siga chayati.
Okay.
I am Snazokweman from Mosul Bay. I will talk about something that I personally experienced here in Mosul Bay. We struggle a lot here. Even the counselor was locked with us in meetings, then he distanced himself from us. He even said the piece of land that is close to us is going to use it to build post office just to indicate that he doesn't want to see us in the city, because he wanted post office to be closer to us. And yet we do have a post office in the city. We don't need post office in order to live where we are staying. We have emerging farmers. For instance, we also have farmers who were farm with pigs, who chose a space which is far from the people and they stay there, far from the people, so that they can manage their pigs there. He is now even threatening to take those pigs and restore that piece of land. We are going to forcefully take the land if you don't deliver. You are, you are failing us as black people. We deploy to in parliament as blacks as you are, but you allow us to be ill-treated. We are oppressed as far as land is concerned. We are going to take it forcefully if you don't deliver. Thank you.
Last speaker on this side.
Ekasari, etazan outurung, ndaiselzo. Hanisablanx, so, so, so plaza, le fan outurung, tot asinjag. Saagjung, hefamwekskral. Ose hisa, washlehto tostand. Hanisablanx, samhene, sahisa, wort ge, gebraitwa, fa streskampa. Hala krachen, hala spoeltuilezin. Ne hense, wati yille zare alberg. Siuze, sekrach, in water wort onniem. Vanwekskral, ek wun in Vanwekskral. Lingman, hek ali jaga weyke. Saagjung kom in, hek wop woer, Peter Latran, losi lehise, sonakart in transport. Wati e bad, hala kan isomploman tregi, hek tele, talka tregi ni, wati nau no. Di boer, fat woer, obi plaza, ken di regire ni, di rutin ni. Di masipalate, ken voni plaza nehise, wati di krach ken be kosta ri, fa hala dai krach insit. Van di boer, wati di, di, di krach hek, alon ni nehse, meno net by di boer di krach koop, er ni by di masipalate di. Hala kan i be anaplikra, hala krach koop. Ma, yemise, wa ekse daram no, men ees kom krach. Wa saag no, si main ken tjenz, an si, tjenz muwyo krach koop. Nau ken deke, wa anaplikri, meno net by di boer koop. Nau asipalate, muwot anzin. Wati os nehse, wati swakri, bad kun, good poop mani gri. Di plaza is te fiel, wari tu boer hek. Saagjung kek woer i plaza te fiel, hala plaza, hala registre, hala plaza, and hala kenis, se name. Wati regesi. Hala tri af, as di kenis se gwon. Os klier longso, heti. Thank you.
I have thanked you. Uh, people at the back, I'm very sorry. They are just, there's one person who has challenges. Uh, she's coming to speak. We'll come back to you. She's, she's the last speaker on this side. Uh, you can lower your hands. We'll come back to you.
Good day, Chairperson and members. Um, I unfortunately did not get the lady's name because she mentioned Outzon and Tisoldor and said that she's from Vanwekskral. The problems that they have there is that the houses that they lived in have been turned into ostrich camps. So they can't utilize it anymore. The people who have worked on the farms for years, they find that their electricity gets taken from them. So they don't have power in their houses. The, at Vanwekskral, farmers sold, um, the land without any title deeds. Um, the workers have not been paid, farmers have just taken over. The municipality must find a way to sell electricity at the cheaper rate to the farmworkers. Because at the moment, the farmworkers can only purchase their electricity from the farmer. Thank you.
Uh, next.
Ti bulise, kumsalanga pambili. Mna ndingululama, osuka yechoche. So, di la pa, ngo kuza, ndines telo, kumsalanga pambili. Si ngabanda ba kupa se ileyo, sinombo to, esna wo, esuensayo. So, siya, sili, si, si kina i, i tambi. Then kekzo tambi, si pinde si lime kuso, ndi si bangi, esine, besi tela umxaba. Ukuzi si fuma ne, ne officesa zo, kuti si kuazo ba si, si tunga kuso, mna ndi patientisa, nandia tunga ngukwa. Si, siya, ya ba fundisa abane, ba ya kuazu tunga, senza nenzi bi. Zini, zisindo si senza yo, koto anke ngon ba, kina yo, inao yo kwenza, e, ukuti si sebenze li kuyo. Siya sokola ike ngo, kungoku, ba baba ninsa, ba bantu, ndikaloko ngo, kukona nalando, yoba kutuakfune kanga, si talisbe ba ninge, ndawene iwan. So, ndinesas telo, soba na tisi, ek tela, uku, 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 menta, si ngetise. Nanke sponsors, ngoba, kalokez, nizindo siya sokola, kasi tunga. Asinazo, imali, imatini, imatini ziyopuka, esinazo. Ngoku, asnayo, ni male yo, kuba si tibani, si kuazo, no kundisa, nabani, nabantuana, abanikana, besayo. Because na ba asinabo, aba kuazu kwenza, anke ngonka, because kwez, zindoso kwenza. Si tela umxaba ne, no kuti asingetise, asinikei sponsors, enko.
I, I am Lulama from George. Greetings to the Chairperson. Chairperson, at George, we, as the disabled people, we have a kind of a project where we clean the dumping site and practice some gardening and we don't have land. We request that you please assist us and provide us with land to can practice this gardening of ours. And secondly, I'm also a teacher who is teaching sewing and beadwork to other people. But the challenge that we are having facing is that we don't have a space for us to can teach as many people as we can. And during these COVID nineteen regulations, we are not allowed to take as many people as you would wish to. So we would ask assistance that we get enough space for us to can practice this gardening as well as the sewing and beadwork. Furthermore, we also want to ask that if possible, that you can assist us to get some kind of sponsorship. Because in all these practices that we are involved in, we do need the funding, including the buying machines for doing the beadwork and the sewing as well as the plowing implements. Thank you.
Master Pendolo, I don't want to be unfair to the people at the back. Uh, are this, have, did we recognize these two hands? Because I want to avoid a situation where people keep on, keep coming in and we disadvantage those that are there. Okay, okay. Yeah, that would be the last one. Yeah.
Goyemarag, gnamo. Um, my name is Bruce Benado. Ek is van a clean community, gnam Kovi. Um, ek voosama di, di EFF, watale, me di expropriation of, of land. Di mensa di regum kwate is.
Uh, before you proceed, at the back, there are four rows that side. While she's speaking, give the people in these four rows stickers. When they are done, we'll take the other four, four rows. Those who have stickers there, they must come down so that they are nearer. Yeah, and then I, I stole you a minute. You proceed.
Thank you. Um, when the expropriation of land, yeah. Ek is ne bangna for that onsobi long running, swesa, twe desa Zimbabwe gan rakni. Van onsitlar, as ons kike in di land, onsitamparlar, is short, it's on kos. And um, ek iti problem is, mensi, imant gestele, sos wat geberet in impaas. Ta yen muwta panishraka for. Ma, dit muwta government, ok, amma wat impala, me di top officials. Di goodekon langal afgaanlo gewese. Kike government officials, hala is net so kara, ha wort gestiel. Ha worte di position uitgaal, ina, ana position ingeset, ma, ha kom absolute niks oreni. As dit obregun geskiit, eh, sos wat di EFF say, dia si gestele, tos gan ons, yo, ons grond terugvat. Di sava ne muwta me government geber. As government muwta for ons, he so, obi floer, hala muwta for ons a voorbeeld stel. Ma, hala stel geen voorbeelden for ons. Di government, war i net, as ai ya boe is, dan zorg ai for himself. And he forget van amma wat ama boe gezetet, om ons mensa, he onerteal. As dit gan geskiit, gla ok ni, oh, yen van ons in South Africa, sal problemiati. Goyedanki.
Uh, just make sure that if there are people who are physically challenged, we must not overlook them. We must take the minds from them. I requested that we first take the four rows and then when we're done, we'll go to the remaining four rows. Okay, and those that have been recognized and given stickers should come to the front. Yeah, okay. Uh, and then, please, uh, let's interpret the, the last speaker and then we proceed again.
I'm Bruce Benado from Kovi and I must say that I agree with the EFF regarding expropriation of land. I'm just concerned about one thing and that is if we go about this in the incorrect way, we might end up being a second Zimbabwe. We already have a food shortage in South Africa. Land reform failed because of corruption. An example must be made of the officials who transgress. They should be punished because they set no proper example for us. I also just want to say, it seems that after the government is elected because they need the people to vote for them, then they forget about those people that they are supposed to represent. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good day, everyone. Henry Mayer. I'm representing Agri Western Cape, uh, the provincial part of Agri Essai. Uh, Mr. Chair and honorable members, congratulations on the, on the flow of the, the hearing. Unfortunately, um, I think you should have stopped the people, uh, because they didn't listen in the beginning what you said. Uh, the decision was already made to, to change the amendment or to change the article. Uh, you just want to hear what, uh, what should stand in the, in amendment, uh, at the moment. I just want to state our, um, seeing from it, is that we're not against the expropriation of land. We're just against the expropriation of land without compensation. Because, uh, ownership of land, of land ownership or, uh, property security is used worldwide as a form of collateral for, for economic development, in short, for, for borrowing money at the end of the day. If you look at the farmers of South Africa, I just want to tell the people who looks like the, at the farmers and think they're very rich. They own ninety-one billion rand at the moment, as speaking, this morning. So it's not so, so green on the other side of the fence. That's, that costs a lot of money to keep that, uh, that very expensive and, and rich look. So, uh, at the end of the day, I just wanted to ask if, uh, if people have over, overthought it, uh, how it's gonna be, how you, if, if land is gonna be expropriated without compensation, which bank is gonna take it as collateral? And how, how is it gonna work at the end of the day? I, I'm just concerned about that. So maybe he was bold in something in the amendment to make sure that the banks can use it at the end of the day. Because nobody's gonna spend, uh, lend you money or borrow you money if, if they don't have any collateral. Uh, what I wanted to say in the beginning is that it's actually, uh, I don't know if it's a coincidence or, or it was planned that the, the meeting was held here at Mosul Bay at the sea. Because if you look at our countries in the north, they all came, all the people came down to South Africa where it happened, where people were, were land, but were expropriated. But we are at the sea. We can't go any further south. It's just a, a thing to, to keep in mind at the end of the day. Right, uh, then we wanted to, to, to say that if the decision is already taken, a court must decide whether land is expropriated without compensation and, and, uh, uh, not by a, a, a government person or, or anybody else. It should be done in a court, in the highest court in the country at, at the end of the day. So, uh, uh, I just want to, uh, uh, state as well that we believe that, uh, title deeds should be given to every landowner because nobody can operate without title deeds. That's all. Thank you.
Ta bulisa, baxalanga pambili. I pay ne, doga nelsi, kuta mbusefa ne, ti paye kro draga. Uh, induwe, ndi visar, obushugu apa, entlu kuipapa shi. Ben digaya, zuba inao yo politika, len keni gezanga, mna kuipolitiku, bayame politiki, ti bezela, ku community woli am. Uh, ndi visar, elu so, boglelon do ba, tinango ku si, si sebiz, induwe politika, si pisanga, indoba maspeken pambili. Dege ngalanda. Uh, number two, chagas. Ubabe ndazile, ndoba, osuka kwalapa, wesin kipe. Ela ga ndibe, gela binyawa. Uh, kuta ya si krisa, manos bezela, imbizo. Manos bezela imbizo, imbizo, onga si paga merio, wa ube uzbizele. Ba be, abantu bestbeka, inga gezabo, ne, ne nga gezabo, apa nga pambili, uba induina. Koto, onga sugume, uye pa kubo, uyo, ya, ke ma to, ndingwe lo, ti flukus bo ne snak. If visarapsho ulendo, ufumanseke, ndoguba, kuti ngo, ku, ta, isetja spetresiti. If visa kapto u lendo, u fu manseke in dooba, kuti ngu ku ta, is it just petrocity? Ufu lega ngu gua, ti siha, siha toni, in dooba speto gua, anesas, is it just yambe sifuna? Nam chalje, suwa zele in dooba, ma se fu mane, in dooba se fu na. Kotua ni na, ngu gua ni balega na yo. Itchi neke ngu guo ndo. Itchi e apo ina, beging na. Two thousand and fourteen, etan da lando agai chetia yo, lam chali ka pambie lachi, u fu ku zenzele. Fuoga yano zenzele. And, u guoba, u ga choga, ababa chali, ba la pa pampwetu, unga zenzele, lam chali ka pambie, wea ba leki. Ka tawasen, me me nam, na ndan, u yutka uwe, ma tikizela mandela. Now, u guenzeka.
Seavonga Baba.
Ing.
Se, seavong, se, seavonga Baba, se, seavonga interpretation, please.
I'm Paimi Sile Tambusa from Croodbraga. Greetings, Chairperson. What is hurting me is to find this forum to be turned to into a political forum. If I knew that you are from the Western Cape, I would not have come here. Because you have called us so many times into different kinds of imbisos and thereafter, there's nothing or no steps taken or even a, a follow-up to check the individuals as to how they are staying, where they are, they are staying. Uh, it is very hurting that, uh, now we are in the government, we have no direction. Now that the government is in our hands, we don't get any direction. I like the saying that of uku zenzele, that is wake up and do it yourself, like the previous speakers indicated. Like I'm here, my livestock has been, uh, uh, taken by the municipalities, I, we struggle to find it back. And I really feel that you failed us. I wish that Ramaphosa could come himself and, uh, rescue us from the situation we find ourselves in.
Thank you. The good Chairperson, my name is Faisal Porter. I'm a member of the Democratic Alliance. I want to stated categorically here today that Faisal Porter is vehemently opposing the amendment to section twenty-five. And for the following reasons. Chairperson, you know what brought us here today? Is the issue around three hundred and ninety-five years. That is in particularly on the, the mouth and the tongues of the youth. Organizations like the, the EFF, your BLF, the ANC, whatever have yous. Is as a result of the reluctance and the incompetence of the government that we are having today. We cannot start off by engaging society debating the issue of land reform. If we haven't dealt with the crisp issue in terms of humanity. The true Aboriginal indigenous people of this country, in particular the land that you are seated on today, is not recognized. And we ha, when we have a system, a regime, a government, political parties that sits in a cabinet deciding as to what must happen, and there's a term called equality, which excludes the Aboriginal people of this land, then we are starting with the wrong foot. Colonialism is a prone word today in politics. But you know that same colonialism is the one that fits us thus, thus far, up until today. And we don't have the decency to honor your kodesas. You know, the, 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 the party, the, the different parties, which includes apartheid regime whom you sat with in transforming this country. The ANC have merged and married with the, with, with apartheid regime, crafting the future of this country. But yet, twenty-six years later, the ANC and its likes speaks about colonialism. Mindful of the fact that as you speak about a, a ship that came abroad here and brought people, you are now bringing a ship from China, bringing a new thing. Colonialism is a special type.
Thank you, sir.
Telling people that they can have land, meanwhile China.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. If you have notes, I see you pick up some notes, if you have your notes, let us have your notes. Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you Chairperson and the people that are in front. Uh, my name is Meli Kaia Blom. I'm those one person who was in two thousand and eleven Conference of the ANC Youth League. That's why now you speak about this thing of the land. I don't know where EFF get it, but we own that thing. Uh, number two, I want to clarify this, Chair. Please, Chair, in the Western Cape, you are frustrated in that you can't get the land. I just studied agriculture, then my grandmothers are there, are all getting old. They can't get water, they can't get any services under the DA government. While you write to parliament, there is nothing. But you are still, you, you, sometimes I don't understand how does government work. Something that I don't understand is just you come here, with these resources you come here, you should give in as a direction what to do with these farms. Because there's no white person is owning the, we must take back the, the land, the land is ours. We can't sit around blaming who and who, we know who is this land for. We can't hear a sitting person here, here at the coys. Why now? Why now is this the struggle? We can't, since two thousand and eleven and now, we must be finishing this now, thank you Chair.
My name is Edgar, my surname is Phillips. My original surname is Flux, is the surname that we got from the time when the slaves were set free in South Africa. Now, I want to bring in some very, very ancient piece of history of the land of the south. We all who are sitting here, most of us, specifically brown and black, we are all having the same ancient father, all of us. Not from Europe, but from Africa. That man's name was Ham. He was our ancient father. We were divided in only three groups in Africa. The top part where Egypt and Libya was, that was two brothers that stayed there. Then we have in the middle part of Africa, what is today called Ethiopia. And from Ethiopia, two of the sons of Kuush, they traveled to the south. Their name was Sabah and Regma. And their two brothers, they became the nation, the first nation that occupied the southern part of Africa. And this country's name was Sabah. And the people was called the Sabahim. This is the ancient people. We have a over three thousand year history with Southern Africa. The country that we call Southern Africa is also called the land beyond the rivers of Ethiopia. This land is also called the land of Ophir. I don't know if you can remember, when Europeans came, they were looking for the land of Ophir. They never found it. We know, because we have an ancient history with this land. All right, why do I say that? Is to tell people who doesn't know, our brothers that came from northwest Africa, stationed in the Great Lake region, and later on went down south. When they came here, they found people here. Some of the brothers called the people of the south Barwa. That means people of the south. The others, if we talk a little bit more to the north, there by Namibia.
Thank.
Just, just one, just one last portion. Then we, they say to us, Kwangara, which means it's the people they found there. Why do I say that? Can we then consider the ancient people of the land as put in the ILO Convention one six nine?
Thank you, thank you for the history. Uh, do you have notes? Do you have notes? Can we get, uh? Okay, okay.
Uh, Pakelsdorp CPA and matapme aklé, es bae shwa, angresin i, uns CPA yengan tu kaskiwit. De probleme ba da ontstaan it. Ba als hele land is vol probleme, ba hoe komme tila uns één kan skif? Dan wil ik nie terugkom. Ik is, ik is een gemeenschap onwikkelaar geweest. Ik draag van ons het huisige bouw, ik was een steenmaker. Steenmaker van behoep. Ons was in George doodgaan, hoe kom? Ons kan nie groent, kry nie. Ons grond wat ons, ei grond wat ons het, wat ons hier maas een parletijd oog, ooggeloop. En dis wat me standpunt is, hoe kan ons nog praat dat daar moet, on ei ning, sonne, uh, 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 vergoeding wees? Waar kom ons voor dag in? Ons zoek, die, die parlement zoek misdaad. Hij roep misdaad aan, en op die goeste manier, want dit gaat die einde wees van ons ei land. Maar ons ei na, ze gaan teen mekaar opstraat. Amen.
Good, good day to you, my name is Norton Davids, I'm from Pakelsdorp, George. I want to say here that apparently they moved the CPA because there were problems. But my, as far as I know, the whole country has problems. I used to be a brickmaker, but I can't do it anymore because I have no land on which to do it. Um, you speak about expropriation without compensation. But I think what the government will be doing with that is just making the whole crime situation much worse in South Africa. Thank you.
Uh, goeiemorgen, uh, mijn naam is Joan Cornelius. Ik plei in zo klein plekje so bij dik aan George, uh, genaamd Pakelsdorp. Uh, as kind het ik daar opgegroeid, en uh, ons het geboer in Pakelsdorp. Klein breinige meenschap, he, wat geboer het, ons was allemaal boeren, ik kom van een boer af. En op hierheilige onbek, zit ons onder grond, die boeren zit so onder grond. Want met die oergang, daar was een oergang geweest wat die oma de, de centric stasi was, was Pakelsdorp later, oog gaan naar George toe. En toen het, toen George inkom, mettele onze gronde gevat van ons af. George municipaliteit, en helle het an, an die rijk, rijk mensen verkoopt, onwikkelaars verkoopt. De eni els, en daar hie rijk mensen. En helle is het vandaag moet ons grond, ons roeven, ons saai mensen gronde, waar de aan Pakelsdorp plei. En, en, en mensen wat binnen die municipaliteit gewerkt, amtenare, en daar hie gronde gekoop, om te verkoopt, an die rijk mensen. So me, op hierheilige onbek is ons als boeren van Pakelsdorp, het ons je grond, he. Onze dieren moeten die straten loop, ons kan nie onze varken anno, ons kan nie groente plant, he. Daar is je grond voor die boeren, he. Die beste vrie die, vrie die groente op, omdat daar nie grond is voor onze, voor onze beestboeren, he. Onze varken loop an die gemeenschappen, en dat is so onregveilig. Ons als brein mensen van Pakelsdorp, wil baie graag weer te rijke wat van ons gevat is. Onze grond wat ons opgegroeid, en onze kinders kon goos gegeerd het. Ons kon mekaar gefoed het. Mijn oma en haar, en haar beervrouw, helle kon mekaar gederd het mekaar. Ons kan nie, ons kan nie plant, he. Want, want, want die municipaliteit die het afgevat van ons af. Nou gegeerde voor onze kleine olappe grond, een stukje grond, helle nie eerst kan onwikkeli, wat nie een heining om het, he. Wat helle ons nog hiervoor ge, voor, voor, uh, 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 vra. Ons moet op hiere kleine stukje grond, moet ons boer, dan kom die boeren ze beste, en helle dieren kom, en helle vrie die goekjes op wat ons geplant het. Zo ons het moet grond crisis. Ik wil nie he wat nie aan mij bewoord, he. Ik wil nie he dat wat aan mij voor ouers bewoord. Zo ik weet niks van hiere amendment, van hiere bill, nie. Die, 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 die regering moet nie rechtdoen aan ons brein mensen van Pakelsdorp. En die politici moet helle uitou, want helle maak beloft is, helle maak beloft is, ik ga een vat, en ik ga het verjorie. Als jelle van mij stem, ik wil niks met politici te doen, he, he. Al wat ik wil he, ik wil nie met grond, he, wat aan mij bewoord, en aan mij voor op. Dank je.
Take the four rows of those very disciplined people and, uh, give them stickers, let them come to the front. Yes, please.
My name is Joan Cornelius and I'm from a little place called Pakelsdorp. As a child, um, we were farmers in our community, our brown community. And we farmed there for quite a while. But now, we cannot farm anymore because our land had been taken away from us. Pakelsdorp went over to George and in that way, we lost our land. The farms that we had to sell, were sold to rich people like Ernie Els and so forth. The municipal officials did this. Now we don't have any land to farm on, what, what can we do? We have cattle, but we don't have land on which they can feed. We can't grow anything, we can't grow crops because we have no land. Our grandparents farmed, and yet now we don't have anything. The municipality gave us a small piece of land to farm on, but it is not big enough for our farming to be sustainable. The big farmers, animals walk across our land and eat our crops. I am not so much concerned about the expropriation part, but what I do want is our land back so that we can continue farming. And I don't want politicians involved, because as soon as politicians are involved, there are other problems too. Thank you.
Are all the people from the top now down here with stickers? So let them begin. Uh, you introduce yourself, the three-minute rule applies. And sanitizing must take place after each and every speaker.
I thank you, Mister Chairperson. I want to greet you all in my native tongue, which is kainces, meaning good day. My name is Joscheff. My name is Yosef Phillips. And I am of the descendant, one of the descendant of the ancient people of Southern Africa called the Sabai. So I would like to release this or leave you with this following statement. We would firstly like to express our appreciation towards the Adoc Committee of Parliament, as well as the Government of South, the Republic of South Africa, in that you, through this process, attempt to redress the injustices of the past. And that in doing so, that you also have acknowledged that the Bushmen and the Koi people of this country are truly the indigenous people of Southern Africa, in that you have voted in favor of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, with one hundred and forty-two other nations of the world at the one hundred and seventh plenary meeting out on the thirteenth of September two thousand and seven in New York. As we have already indicated to you, who these people are and their ancient history and connotation to the land of their inhabitants, we would like to draw your attention to what the international bodies advise the states in which these people reside. Starting with the Charter of the United Nations and Statute of the International Court of Justice, where nations declared, "We, the people of the United Nations, determined to save succeeding generations for the scourge of war, which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind, and to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in equal rights of men and women, and of nations large and small, and to establish conditions under which justice and respect for the obligation arise from treaties and other sources of international law can be maintained, and to promote social progress and better standards of life in larger freedoms." For this reason, we would like to request the government and parliament of the Republic of South Africa for full and complete recognition and implementation of our right to self-determination within South Africa, based on the provisions of the International Charter of the United Nations, Article One, Subarticle Two, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, Article Twenty-Eight, the United Nations International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, Article One, Subarticle One, the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights, Article One, Subarticle One, and the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa, Section Two, Three, Five, which we minorities and all peoples are entitled to as fundamental freedoms and inalienable rights. Furthermore, it is relevant and appropriate to shift our attention towards the treaty that I-
Thank you very much. And let the, leave the notes for us because we are saying very important things, which we don't want to miss, but we can extend the time, please.
Gangas, katses. My name is Commissaris Kryk Cupido, Kakalak. I can see here from Moselbay. I can see Koi San Yestanasi van die land. A korana, om precies te wees. On's voorvaders het ons geleer. Die land bewoord nie aan ons nie. On's bewoord aan die land. On's is a inneemse volk, nie ons zichtbari. Goverment, I will not say history, will judge you. Here the land beword aan ons. Laat ons besluit hoe ons hier die land wil deel. I will gebreek maar van hier kaans. Net om te say, hoe kom waters misgekek? Dinge wordt besluit. Hier die vergadering kom ons bij mekaar vandaag. Ik verstaan, dat was een vorige vergadering gewes. Onset nie geweet af van die. And the old day, the die karre met leispeakers rond gerij. And the gemeenskap ingelig, or dinge wat gaan plaatsvind. Maar ons weet, ons zit nog met internet en al die sociale media, hoe dinge geadverteer word. Maar ons wat in die kreet van onse gemeenskap is, draan die kennis af van die. Ik het per ongeluk geword van die vergadering, om die waarheid te say. Ja, ik sta met, ik, ik sta met de cel voorn, maar het wil niet say, dat hij altijd an is, of wat ik betrokken aan is nie. En ons is mensen wat leester, en die gron, en aan ons land. Gangas.
Can uns die noeters van die EKreyas oblief?
Good day to you all. My name is Kryk Cupido. I'm from Moselway. Um, in fact, I'm a korana, but a nation, a member of the First Nation. I just want to say that the land does not belong to us, but we belong to the land. The land is our own and we will decide how it will be utilized and divided. Um, we were not informed about this meeting because we didn't know. I know there's internet and everything else around now, but we were, we did not know about this meeting. In the past, these type of meetings were advertised by vehicles traveling through the different areas and having loudspeakers and telling the people, informing them about this meeting. But I just want to say that we were not informed. Thank you.
Next. Now sanitize, please.
Amanda. Gawe tu. My boy, yeah, in Africa. And I will laam talga pambili, noba wakku mama banla. Mna andi zaal continue isha. Cause I believe that our struggling still continue. Eh, especially i, issue om lla. Ika malam diw sandile maseko. Di se farmer, a pehrot brake itke kech on aspech na, bas ik emfo. We farmer, eh, government. Ika malay farmer, eh, eh, lo mbu towe, itukudon maskneda, the Small Farmers Association. Si piske pasima katalia. In nga geet, to safman om lla, be farmer, sinuwa ngu government, ngu two thousand. But the issue, ever since that time, was otika ngoku, asna mans, asna madama, asna mans, a mans is ipilwa, ngu man escaleleloa, kuma spala. Every time. Then di bigilele nga, eh, twenty fourteen, eh, parliament, eh, se Otsong. Di apinda vier, ni zo ibi ika na lap. Kagu enzegendo, from that time, even this time, agus guenseka. We believe that, but eh, sineng kinga, ya bandwa basema kunin. Eh, abanga, quasi, u, 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 ya, quasi, nda, usikuuso, bas na ete. Eh, di anda, we CPA, which is the CPA is the Communal Property Association, eh, in rural development, under Uclan Smith pan, and the si pan si gomis brao. Si ne problem, says this follow, small farmers. Zo nga, bina pu lli solive la yo. Nobu llaanga, pakati we bala, kaba nbe bala, which is Kalad. Pakati kaba mniama, na pakati kaba mlobi, obu kobegeka yo glad department.
Which we got from the government, but we still have a challenge in that farm. The challenge that we are faced with is that we don't have dam, or we don't have water, we rely on the supply from the municipality. I reported this issue in two thousand and five at Otsan, but up until now, nothing happened. During the time of the previous minister Kukulenquinti, he indicated that this issue should be attended to. But we have a challenge of officials who don't want to play their roles and the kind of leadership who doesn't give us a fair play sometimes. And the other challenge is that the changing of ministries that also make us suffer as the people who were supposed to be served by the department. It's also a racism challenge in that department between the coloreds and the blacks that we are faced with. We request that government please assist us and listen to our plight. We as small farmers, we struggle. We do get some kind of assistance from other commercial farmers. Yes, as much as some are not too much friendly or keen to assist us, but there are those who are good and who are good-hearted to also assist us. Thank you.
We respect your slogans. But if you take time making slogans, we are not going to give you additional minute. So just go to the point because the slogans we all know, but we want your wisdom on the questions that we have put before you. Thank you very much.
Taveres, I'd say we is growed. Op my beer will I not um see that as I could get it here is a politis um politisy and gleanty um so I may end like a distance here right, but in Seattle, I'm like okay. Um, on that I know no it's so it's by gewon't it, no? I was what's the growth of ma under a political style, so no. Where I can then come, where I I I up grow is hit as an a kraal in a in a kraal manier. Oh, that I coy san van here land is. I had get cry from my four hours for my hours off. And that so see tight and again, it and I up grow it was I'm near and near geintereseert over me, where from Dan I come. And I stand as a trot so coy San Chin from South Africa. I can believe in the gleanty now. Oh, to can beside who fear it was come as the folk of the land under the verdricking, the verarming, the trapping, the veraching. Where dear, I was most come, but I'm stand steeds. And I glue that for into salar and I was regged on board. And this is my play doy, don't then reg and the folk of the land. I stand as a mother, I stand as a frau and the kept for my coy sisters and my coy bros and for my own school kinders, I was verloro's kinders. I was verloro's kinders in a young, in a young older dom, oh, that they're not yet. I like Kenny, I like war from Dan, I like come, no. Want I was a mothers, I was a great mothers, a tongue was still game. I was con, I was a moodertaal, no learn, no. And that is on dear year that I was as a folk, ten me car in upstand most come, when it is so gook is reared. My play doy is, don't then reg and the folk of the land. And I glue as that begin gedon board. Oh, reg to do on I was as the in them so folk, then can alles reggestel board. When I was a good girl, met Akerbau, so I was kin motheraarde. I was kin two go up, but you were all on ten word of a good gears is. So I was connected with two go up and motheraarde and I was as the kinders from two go up in motheraarde.
Bye, a danke, damme, bye, a danke. Let's get the translation.
The lady didn't give a name or place where she's from. She said she just wants to make use of this opportunity to say that if she knew that this whole thing was a political issue, she would not have attended. Where she grew up and where she came from, she grew up on a farm in a manner befitting a farm and also that she is proudly part of the coy and son community. The past was painful, where folk like the, should I say, non-whites here were dehumanized and treated badly. But she knows that the future will be better. Said you must listen and look at the communities and especially our children. Because our children are lost, because they do not know their past, they do not know where they come from. And that all of us are part of Africa, South Africa, as an indigenous group, and we are all connected. Thank you.
The abu lisay buchulumele na gbagala ngapambili. The hu ya ufulmanale ngal kayba yo baba ndibe napa namu go lusuku. Mna ndisuka eh George, nduwa ayanda sebezo ika ama. Di kulele ele iti freya, da gada sufuma niscolu ka ngwe zulimo. Kuzolo, agricultural school. Di tena ufiga kagua apa eh George, da na disautata wi farming. Utaata wi farming, ba be ngotaata bamba, duwa besi be ngulunga umbutu apa, waba fuwi. But eh ka uka ngulunga umbutu, we kaba sensei constitution. Wa vela indo eh tukubu, awuko um 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 saba ufulya, foreborn. Wa ngai da unazikumini sa waya kasa waya ku fishani, wa benzela inansiga, wa ba na disa wi 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 na zka yo baba, yo baba pumela. Ba pumela la je, gu banga be full so ulima, ki ngu nabba, dabba nomda ka kulika, mna kuwita, ba be full so ulima, namda, na disa sa fa, ba full so ulima, sa pumela la. San niwa um saba wetaf, singa ma twenty nine. Sa kalisaka ulima, apo sa sebeza, kala kala, no ba ku kulete, du te kina, eh supporta, ne mbala zabu. Sasi zneki we inansiga itip, se ankomu, sa zneki wa inansiga, no saba sa dini, yaba, gunya kawo mne waka. Gunya kawo S B ini, za ngipinde, kubekondo ikube, ikube, keka, wa siya zuba ngaba. Di no mla, oka, go uku uku banga ba ndibe konan, ndibe, we ya pu ku pu hiswa itema, we kumshaba, we we ose ose kala, umpleka, ku lumsebezo, wa usensega, goda, da wa puta puta, kandje, ndika, ba zuba ngabo, pege ngapina. Guo ke, ngo, inwendi intada, yo nen ndingoni la, ndiba ngabi, ngaske, ubuchulumele, ubipinde, buka, we a uchige, na, la mshati, na sa suniwa, eh George. Gu banga ba akonto in kubela, ne peka pamili, na gu banga ba, wa uka be sa upata, da utaata, na, kacha, kaku njeke, ngoksiya fuwi, ah, ndiba ngaba. Uno seje, ziswa ngaba, ndaba kwa zus, abba lo kwa zus, sebezo, sa ku pege pamili, sa ba na du prudumede, ka ku le gus.
Interpretation, please.
Greetings to all everybody present here, starting from the officials from the government. I'm Ayanda Sebezo from George. I managed to get a little education in agriculture, in agricultural school, in the Far Eastern Cape. When I came to this site, as I'm from, was born in Lady Frey. When I came to this site, I assisted my father in his farming practice. But the challenge came when they were busy crafting a constitution, because there was a lot of issues that came up. So nothing positive came out of that. And we struggled to get land until Minister Kukulenquinti assisted us, we, they could manage to get land. And I was willing to assist as my father was involved in that agricultural program. We only managed to work for two years and then after that it was quiet. Up until now, I really request that this committee should make a turn there by George and check at the program that we're involved in to whether can't maybe this committee assist us. By then, our fathers were ready to pay for the piece of land that they could get to get involved into agricultural farming. But now it's good that you come with this amendment of expropriation. So we hope that if you can maybe make a turn there, you can maybe find it in your house to assist us to get our agricultural or farming practice in action. Thank you very much, Chairperson. I am Yedua Mayila, a member of Active United Front, a Plattenberg Bay based political party that is in council through one seat in a council with thirteen seats each between the A N C F six seat. I'm not there. I support the amendment of section of constitution where the land and property right is concerned. It is very true that currently, it is so easy for the minority that happen to be white people and those who have connection in higher levels to access the land. Chairperson, I am an active farmer with no land. Farming to us, especially as black people, especially those who coming from the former trans guy who grew up there, it is more like in culture, because these are the things that we grew up doing and our forefathers before us were doing. Because of the capitalist system, we have to move from the former trans guy to this side of the land in Western Cape. Here, it is very, very challenging to access land. Currently, we have livestock that are roaming around the townships because we don't have land, even if you want to lease it. Won't you won't get any farm, any farm, any farm land to lease. But white people will easily access to that land. We need, we need land, Chairperson, to be under government. But the government need to be detected by working class because it is not safe for us to say, okay, land will be taken from the white people to government. Who is government? Who have access to government? As long the working class is still in that level, will still depend to those who have connections if the government is not controlled and run by the working class in a dictatorship. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Oh, my bullies, eh, shalinga pamile. Eh, ndibulele ngel tuba. Kaligane, ndibulishe, ndisaluta, E M P's, the E F F. The saluta commander, Zulias Mallem. Bulishe, kumalu ngwe parliamente giapa, onke, na we A N C. Eh, mshalinga pamile, ika malam, ndingizugil. Uh, hohua, puma glam saba, wa bukumbu, eh, Eastern Cape. Di talenga, eh, Platin dekpey, ulama spala, wa sepito. Did I support, apa ndizo support? No, section twenty five. Goba, um saba, wa thadwa, we uutwa. Ngapandle, we ina triso, na ngapandle, we zizatu, ezipateka. Yeltra sha kutuwa um saba, kokoko betu. Za ngiputwa maguzo ta triso, za ngipu banikesu ina triso, okani zizatu, ezifakalayo. Guo ku funegue, ku buiswe um saba, ubuyele, ku uti, ku baninibao. Kutuwa masizi, sita trise, ba waisi sicho. Di ayas, ki mshalinga pamile, kuza obalewa, ku iwe nku nlenza ma kiala. Ku we ispue imali, ku toka ngale issue um saba. Um saba, ma buyle e bandui, okoka. Kule covid nineteen, bektwa funegi social distance. Abantu, ba kuti, abam nyama, izinlu zabu zingi, ku la forty square. Ababi nan ndawo zo ku sabala ezipangeleleyo. And okunye, kune peki atitwila zabantu, abalimileyo. Ku ba be nganam sabu, fumanse, ba iate zabu zingi. Abana yo um saba, owaneleyo. Kupinde, kubene farming, abandu benzi farmer, abafuile yaku, abalimileyo. Tabbe funegue, be funene ifounding. Ku ya ku funegue, eh, F number, funene, ku funegue, eh, permit, obalo um saba, nu ni kiwe na ku we. Ufulmanse, kabantu, ba kuti, bayatana gala, because, because F number, kumshaba, ba uni kiwe, ba nzo vile pa. Okunye, kune project, taba, eh, kati senseka, ku parliamente ngapambili. Apo wa kiya gulungi so izinlu, zab, zezleb. Ufulmanse, ba um saba, space, sinri. And ilando ngokuwa isense, ikoba, bantu balungselo, abanezino zezleb. Di fumanis chance, we palace, apa, ku ni malungwe parliament, lo ndo le. So se atela, sini bongoza. Se kuti, tapto tuwa, ngale issue um saba, parliamente ni buyleva, ni ngai deto, nengawa ku peha malungwe E F F. And akusu bakonito, ba ku iwe ngo, ku nku nlenza ma kiala. See, this is supporter, this section, president, wenza, kaku tlu kuti, lendo maiza, pa kuti, um saba, ma buyle e bandui.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I am Zukile Hohwana from Kumbu, Eastern Cape, and I'm currently employed by Bitou Municipality at Plattenberg Bay. Greetings to the Chairperson, I thank you for the opportunity and greetings to all the honorable members. As I'm standing here, I stand to support this bill. I must say that our land was taken without any explanation and with no reason. But now that we want to expropriate our land, we are said to have to give reasons as to why. As as much as the land was taken forcefully without any message from whoever, from those who took the land from our people. I know that there would be some litigations following this action that we are involved in, but we are behind you. Our houses where we are staying are very small. As now we are expected to practice a social distancing that is totally not practical where we are staying. And furthermore, even the areas that we want to use to make our life easy. Furthermore, I want to assist, to plead with with you that when you decide as to what has has to be done as far as expropriating this land, don't leave E F F out. We want you and we plead with you that please deal with this this issue and expropriate and try to expropriate land as soon as possible. We, we also concern about the problem, the project which was there previously during the last parliament. There was a project where people who are staying in slave houses were assisted, that the houses were they were, they were assisted in rectifying the houses to suit a particular standard. Even now, we still need that process to proceed or that project to proceed because our people are struggling where they are staying, in particular, I'm referring to the people who are staying in slave houses.
Thank you.
And as bullsera, namu kulumshang, wa la pa emoselbe, ndikumkoli, siwa, kati ngiswaya. Ndisuka kuela se Middleback Cape, odan ditlonga aba eh George, singa ma famana, ama ngana. Afamikange, ngomonge, kusha, nepo, kwayo, ngindo sinayo, inaki esinayo. Kuba ge, singa bandu, abalaba, kulumbutu, eh, A N C sesi, na ngo, na bandu, ababu. Obana, ba kutuwa na ngo government, ku pe, no ba ilo ten rand, angeze sfulmane nesent. Obaba utufiga, zyo boya zewa, oba, oka A N C osengaki. Estelo besina, so umbutu, utendize, aba, di zo, ti siya mchasa o government. Oka ba au taata um saba, wenzela, bandu, ba fuman e mi saba. Wa ayas, siya ivuma indo, oba ikona indo, ande ngapartite, apa eh George. Ungabona, ka kupakwa, uku ti afra ama farmer. Bonge, abo bantu untu, ufiga bemekalin, abau, fumanan, taata. Indo ekube, gimi nyaka, aba, gebe ku teli, uka, uka ikoni nglena. Esino, ti siwa ye, genkayo, singa lamalu ngafuya eh temalitu. Be esino ufulya o government, ake azo, esoba, kakutiwa. Afike o government, kakutiwa, adronge, kupakela, ba ni na. Di akunyakuba, ge ndimfucha, anne, enne tuba, lpelil, nenle, be sika government, sesi tinew. Be sifunaba, si kati selendo, di zau, ti ndiabulila, lo mshuswana. Godwa, inaki, le, indo besfu, wevesa, ife di lega. Obasno, ti sfulmano, ne, to, oba, sihokwe, kakutiwa, ngus.
Translation, please.
I am Mr. Tingiswaya from Middleback Cape, an imaging farmer here in George. Here in George, we as the black imaging farmers were ill-treated. For instance, if you are a member of the A N C, when there are some things that need to be done or assistance need to be given to farmers, we as the A N C farmers, we get nothing. Apa date is very alive here in the Western Cape. You will experience, witness that when farmers' assistance are to be delivered or farmers need to be getting some kind of assistance from the government, only the white farmers benefit from that. I so wish that you as parliament members or the government, you would be present when those that is happening, when we as farmers need to be receiving the kind of assistance or any kind of assistance from the government. You'll really witness it live that only the white farmers are meant to benefit in this province. We as the black farmers are not taken care at all. Thank you.
I see some ladies who are coming nearer. I don't want them to deny them the right to speak. Let, can you, let's see who who of them wants to speak. You know what, we came to these people, so let's allow them to speak. Yeah, yeah, give them the. Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's them, you know, in here and. I give them the stickers, let's. Yeah. Give, yeah, give, give them those shoe, the stickers and then we close, yeah. Let's respect the three minutes rule. Proceed, lady.
Kene salone, tanga, dibulishe, timunomi, semna. Ti shal, ti senaisna. Okokhlala, goda, kendi ndo, mbia sepai. Mna, oka banga, bana, ndipuma, emchulwe, kwe lu kolo. Sasi susiwe, eh, opa, ti sasiwa, eh, bongan. Kususuwa, ku eti, kusuka, Q N two. Sa okhlala, siwa bongan, sa busy, so, kota masizi, si za, ku, ku mali, esisa ivuma na, since ba sisiwe, ulanda, o sa okhala ku. Sile, sa, sensei forms, sa palisa, sensei, kendo. San niwa imali, enka sixteen thousand. Ku atwa kuti, si za, imali, si niwa, wa pinda, ku atwa kuti. Mas bui, si za, palisa, zin forms, eh, z forms, sa bui, kota masucho, ngakala, makama, we to, eh, honi, eh, library. Sa watcho, ama kameto, sa fuman, sindo ba, ama kameto, sa se konan. Asipina, si palisi forms, oke sbini, ku atas, za, ni ki change itu. Sile, ke, ku atwa kuti, masime, oka basi, sa mile na ku, ngus.
Don't forget, we are talking about amendment of section twenty five. We want the content on section twenty five. But those who have other issues, there are parliamentary constituency offices here and there are local leaders of various political parties, you can raise the other issues there.
Singa libalubasi, siya pango, section twenty five, kota, baba, kubandu, bana, zinyaki, es nganando, kwenza, alo, section twenty five. Banu ku yake, ku offices, eh, parliamente, eziko yuapa, ba yu paga, misa kuani, me bayab.
Chairperson, I'm no mese from Nice, but I'm originally from Port Elizabeth. Forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn or out of context. We were staying at Opati, where we were removed to Bongani for the construction of N two. And then later we called back and we asked to fill in forms, which we did. And then later we paid an amount of sixty thousand rand. And later we called back and said that we should check our names on the list again. We checked and we found our names were still appearing on the list. And we're told that we will get whatever the remainder is still outstanding there. But up until now, we are still waiting, we never heard anything after that. So we really need, ask your assistance in that regard.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Chairperson. Goi, danke, ga, subiki metals, subiki mixa, yeses, danke for the gleanty. My name is David Kamfer. I is the provincial lawyer of the Kauza and the Wesca. My is so the raidslit of Mosselbay. Now, I was very glad that the parliament today, he na togekomet. And Mosselbay is very problem, for all round, um, the ground is so in Mosselbay. And I can no go or for marriage, is it very men's and very dialed it for daddy geprat. But it's the same the men's what up this stadium, I was grown in. I'd hear, I'd feel here and with means of a long term main contract of thirty to fifty five and thirty years. Now, I'll wait, the ground on a ining is up pat. And of what le make is, I'll hear the ground I am busy here now for long term main. I get a raidsve gathering on Mosselbay, I think, I think, I've fra. How can it be is that ground in Mosselbay now nog net na with means of to with busy with means of to go on? That can must be where see. And I will fra for marriage. Angesendiding of a ground so groot is so is, van ground on a ining, that the parliament's sales might go and kick now, om interditte te krei. So let the raden and the name in the Wesca, the dia municipality nie ground on this stadium can I'd feel here for long term main, when they'll wait, what can come, as it can come, then it's the off sake for, it's a nie, it's a nie men's, where it, where it here and there in the municipality. So I will earnest of fra.
Are being made. We, we were taught in the past that those ninety-nine year list old this year is gone. But things are not as we are thinking. Things are going on. So my plea is just if the two, the province, I know the province has got land. I know local government has got land. But if to rectify the mistake that the Gloria's movement did in the past by putting itself in the shoes of the opposition. Stop that. Stop the two. Don't allow any sale of land. And then we will continue with. And then only after that you open up the doors. Open up the doors. I'm so, I'm so fortunate or lucky to see that the organizations fighting for land are indeed moving. Because within my organization, uh, the youth of the ANC is a bit quiet. And, uh, the EFF is, is moving forward. And I'm also glad that the person with the background of the PAC is now the minister. And it was nice to see her there being put as a minister.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
Very much. Uh, lady?
Eh, Mr. Chaperson. Kuenyene Shkabasako. Ndiya Sbulisela. Gekama Eli Hlielumfeliwetu Ngiesukrestu. Eh, ndunguno Sango Chamnuan. Kumhlaba wase Pito. Kotwa ikaya ndise matatiele. Ndilhaba, ndilhala kumhlaba wase Krex. Kurlan village. Tingu mfarma osakasayo. Tingu mfarma otenga indawu umhlaba. Asina umhlaba kula ndawa sifuyekuyo. Asina onamanzi. Imfuyo yetu inganiwa akoko amanzi. And isikesaya kumaspala wase Pito sao funa indawu. Umaspala wase Pito ashtale lindo woba asinawazu kufuma na umhlaba ngengaa yabantu abamshope. Abashala enechas velle. Bati asinawazu basi ngafuma na umhlaba glenda sifuyekuyo. Ngengaa yeh joho zabo esu semanziini. Bati imfuyo yetu isa orasela i joho zabo esu semanziini. Si vagapriungu ngoba kalo gu tina ngongo umhlaba. Siyagwazu basilime. Siyagwazu basifuye. Si fuma nindogo basonde abantu anabetu. Ku basi ngapangeli. Kotwa namshange abantu abamshope bati asinawazu ukufuma na umhlaba ngo nganga yeh joho. Yeh ipinto balulekileo kagungu ngitu nejoho. Siyavuyagengo kasi lapa gulenda o. Si zopala za inchungu yetu si ngongo mama ngoba kalo siyayazi nindoba kasi palaza inchungu yetu. Si za wazu pasamkeleke siyakela betunana. Nige niha ambe niyo fika kula umhlaba wase Krex. Uzizindu. Abantu baguti basale ma chotio mbini. Ku basi si kagmetu. Nganga yeh umhlaba kutumhlaba awuku. Siyakela betunana si kala sikesi woyeke kumhlaba wase Krex. Si ngavuyae mfeni ngoba basi zehapa. Nige niha ambe niyo vela. Ina bigandinjen basi zehapa. Kandindu yetu isa opelila apa. Ina pindi ambe lepambile.
Seeabulala mama, right, wait.
Eh, I am Nosango Chamnuan from Pito. Uh, greetings to the chaperson and the delegation. I'm an emerging farmer from, uh, Krex there in Pito. Uh, the major challenge we have, we don't have enough piece of land to practice our farming. You don't have water. Uh, we went to the Pito municipality to ask for a piece of land or to share our challenges to them. But they told us that the piece of land or the land that we are staying in, we cannot get it to, for us to do a farming due to the farmers around us. The farmers around us are concerned, they don't want us to get that land because our animal are going to disturb their animals or johas which are residing under our water. So that is the challenge that we have. So now our greatest pain or hurt is that what is more important us as human beings who rely on land to feed our families and kids and the animals which are staying under the water or the johas, as the speaker put it. So we are very concerned about that. We asked the par- parliament to really intervene. We'd be very glad if this committee can make a turn there and intervene, not just listening us here. We really wish that something must be done after this gathering, that a kind of an oversight must be done in that area of us in Krex that we can be assisted to get a piece of land where we can practice our farming to feed our families.
And next.
Molweni. Mna ken diabu adkota ken si speak is closer. Dugunsu tigado. Molweni tata ne, ne, ne Shkabasako. Ndiya Sbulisa ne sputu sezmkileyo. Induani misapa tata ye vanja kuteteka. Di gen da titeka ndjegu ba nipagama ko na ngogo mva. Na vengo ngada tuteti polu tinga, ah, kandia apa si tata. Gen duza epesisi nezus tisi nde fa nama farmer kufamish. Si gen da titeka ngani ngela klasa. Bo tata, di lapa. Ti wapa etemba letu. United Farmers Small. Tingu Elizabeth Masemethuluana. Payana nineteen ninety-six. Basifunza ku agriculture. Si funde minya kaku agriculture before basi umhlabin. Azange maybe si tate infu ya citizens si ngama farmer. Or maybe pete, pete, pete katu tutungu mfarma. Uh-uh, si funde kaku agriculture. Diakula sina minya gen mi tatu si funda pa. Before basi fuma umhlaba. Ninety-nine basi sestela mboshi. Ninety-nine basi sestela mboshi safuma umhlaba se temba letu. E F number ezabateta angazo sina azogla temba letu. Le, le apa sifuyo. Guo guinduani kaga yo. Ukuru mendeh wetu. And kala kukuzo abantu ahun. Esi obu nyubuson ndiabazipaya no abanabunda kotu nabuwea ndi呀z. Ukuru mendeh ya nikaga muna. Oza na tikavuklaman de stembisa. Esstembisa. Kotu na kukukuzi ndo. Oza fikimoto sezme apa. Kutwa yeh puma apa. Ikasha lipelile. Di puma njana ndan. Hayo onamhlaba. Jani. Di niwe e F number ku nimhlaba. Hayo onamhlaba busa puma apa. Kotate lomdu onye namhlaba, onye na F number. Aso beka wapakuwe. Induasi bo na pay temba letu siyaklabani songukuru mendeh. Guo guoska tati luagish wali beka wapakuwa basi famisha ka wakete two thousand, two thousand and one. Si tengisa yepo fika kotu si famisha diasina manzi. Basitola manza petro. Si keshala masimama kulu. Itongu za wangea kiri o mama o zange natsi. Si keshala masimama kulu. Si tina ngoba kunama, kunamanzi. Basitanga shalosho so tengisa ikacho lotu kutuha inamanzi. Si ngamasenjalonjala bespila locho pay temba letu. Ngoba kunamanzi temba letu. Si ngena manzi yeh temba letu. Payana imote sechigala sa abantu abamshope kutuha masipume payana. Ba furuwa zitorezin, ba furuwa zinton tonzabo payana natsi. Guo, and kwasu mta kupuma pa buta tadi za otola. And kwasu puma di funde la natsi. Asi genanga je. Ega ti si genene natsi gena. Uh-uh. Kungea namantu bangafuta ngawa beka kapambile. Guo ku kuti makara si mila ngoba si famisha si mila kuti makara. Abashala ma tati la ba obeki zinto payana kutu. Maro ngao yeh kuata ngomaspa, ngomaspa temezo shalapa. Kuti makara ngoba tinasa ngabalimi. Ndesipisi si genega yeh. Bele basi funde luka agriculture. Si ngabalimi sifuya nenkomo eso aba yeh ba fuya nenkomo. Kotu no tika ngako. Ime kajana ndaba senazu ukuru mendeh kasa nata kula ndu se temba letu. Induasa temba letu ay, ay namtla butata. Too much. Abantu kasa pina sabegelokisha apapanguedu. Ya ukuwa trata ba tate onye la trata.
Seeabunga mama.
Nan si kela itu.
Seeabunga mama.
I'm Elizabeth Siluana from Tembaletu. Greetings to the chaperson. I was a bit confused here in the beginning. But I now realize that we are speaking about something which is very important to us. Is the issue of farming. Uh, I'm from the emerging farmers of Tembaletu. And we are part of the Tembaletu United Farmers. We were not just a farm, we were picking, it did not just became farmers just because of our small gardens in our yards. We were educated. We got agricultural education. And even nineteen ninety-nine, we were at Stellenbosch where we were given empowerment as far as agricultural education is concerned. But now the challenge we are having is that we don't have enough land. And the piece of land we are staying in, the municipality is creating some kind of confusion because they'll come there with a vehicle to tell you that you have to move away from this piece of land you're occupying. And whereas they are bringing somebody who don't even have an F number. So we are really concerned that, or wish that you should please assist us there at Tembaletu. We are really struggling as the people of Tembaletu and the emerging farmers. Our municipality is confusing us. It's sending people to come and erect, uh, their homes in the piece of land that we regard as our farm, as our farmer. We are pleading with you to please assist us and change our situation or our life as emerging farmers of Tembaletu. As we are being told that we have to move in that area because they want to create a residential area. I personally, I'm not prepared to move away from there because that's where my life, my life is. Because that's where my livelihood is, in that piece of land.
Thank you.
Nkosi ndiabulela. Molweni tata ne Shkabasako. Eh, si lapa namshange. Asikola apa ngoba sitanda tina. Si lapa ngen trunguzetu. Si zopala zinchunguzetu kuny. Namshange apa singama farmer a se temba letu. Eh, kutala sa kalisukfamisha etemba letu. From nineteen ninety-nine kalisukfamisha etemba letu. Sa F, etemba letu sastrainer kakulu njovalo mama esichonje. Sastrainer ile temba letu. Sasuka sa pegana sa stela mboshi. Enyindo sa fuya futi mnandi fuyile. Ingomo pakum. Apasifuya kona. Akwama ngato etemba letu. A, a i konje ifama etina mklasa ukalisaguetu knikwa umhlaba. Sa unigwa mulampifiki ngo ninety-nine. Ngato twenty-six is gafepe wari. Wasini kulampifiki akwabiko is bonsa sezefuma na yo. Kuakutwa is bonsa sezazefuma na. Unato sezalfuma na. Eh, we unato salfuma na. Go ba amantingwa we kona. Kubuyelu. Abantu bagama spala baba. Dan ndilhale place ngunenomi, kuenyenumie nam. Abantu bagama spala ba fige. Bazo kupai inatsi ga imibani. Ba ibele mibani net box basi ibe. Abantu bagama spala si lima pa nomie nam. Totu mienamata solegango two thousand and eighty. Da xiega pan di ne ngomo. Di ne aku kutuele yonkinto. Di fundi sa abantu anabam. Kanga ngo ba na ngogo. Disena abantu anabam base college. Ga apa eh osoni. Di ba fundi sa ngalamfuyo. Enyindo ndikela kunibe tunana. Abantu base parlamente kaga nisna ete. Snateeni ningafuni crossway du. Snateeni mnandi funa nji klingo. Disuwa soku ti ndispo bege ngomo umhlaba wa. Guo bu mienamua ndishya nenngomo. Di nabantu anabam funda yo. So andi funda abantu anabam uba bayabanga mastela. Di fundu ba fundi sa abantu anabam. Ba be nen, nen fundo eh pagamileyo. Ngani yeh mama wabo. Nkosi tata.
Take the contacts of that lady, Penduro. Just follow up concerns.
Thank you chaperson. Greetings to the chaperson and the delegation at large. The lady unfortunately did not give the name. We are here, uh, not by choice. We are only here because we, there is a need for us to be here. We are oppressed and feel that we need to get some kind of assistance. We as the farmers of Tembaletu, as the previous speakers indicated that we did not just become farmers by choice. We were trained in farming or in agriculture in nineteen ninety-nine, Stellenbosch. And the piece of land that we are staying in was given to us by Lambi Fiki on the twenty-sixth of February nineteen ninety-nine. And my husband, uh, my late husband was still alive then. So we started together, this farming together with my husband. We had a lot of livestock that we use for our livelihood. We use this livestock to educate our children. Because even now, my, some of my children are at higher education, institutions of higher education like colleges. We don't want to, our kids become thieves or robberies or robbers because they are not educated. We want to assist them to get a better education by using our farming. So we are really pleading with you to come and assist us here at Tembaletu. As the fa, as the emerging farmers. We hope that this does not end here today. Because we, we vote for you, we appointed you to be there. We wish that you can do something positive for us as the emerging farmers of Tembaletu.
Thank you, next.
Eh, Nkosi mklala ngapambile. Professor Iskabasako. EFF Leadership. Bonka batlo npegabakoy. Tingu makaya mapeka. Ndisuka eh plate. Eh, apa ndiso kasa ukuti umhlaba ma uwuyele banduin ngapantje kwentlaulu. Tinesiza twesitatu es, es banke la londo. As we sit now, eh, plate npegpe we are under fire because of abantu ba funa izindu. And then the problem kutwa akoko umhlaba. In two thousand and eight, a white guy, eh, etengisa umhlaba ngayeh two million. Because of indo yoba ibonili kutuza ushala. Yeh inewsai price eleven million. And then it stopped from there. And then it take another long time ugnikosheta na yo. By twenty sixteen, again the same guy. Yeh pinde yeh etengisa another piece of land. They call it a mineral land. By eleven million. Municipality take a long time again. Now we are under fire because abantu ba funi ndausabu zo klala. Si su, suakwinda wu if I can tell you, iminar land, it's about sixty by fifty meters. I'm not saying by sixty kilometers, sixty by fifty. I think it's a double. All like this one. Si user as the ETA site for abantu. Abantu nao bayalu abafunu yaguze ndau. Si cheliklo ndo injalo ikumba ama tayar. Ama farmer etu imfuyo zawo si banjwa every day. Si kasha e transport ge six hundred rand from plate ukusa eh George. Si tres, si kasha e trailer ngayeh three hundred and fifty, which means nine hundred. Ufika ukulule ingomo ngayeh five hundred and fifty eh George. If ingomo zako zine une two thousand, two hundred plus la nine hundred and fifty ofanile uybatani. Itilondo une three thousand one hundred and fifty ofanile uzena. Uzo ukulule imfuyo yago because ama farmer wetu awana umhlaba. Asikwazu lima izindu seznekuwa yeh ngofuti by forty. Kuki program ze begi at food garden esenzekayo. Bati kaga wazu kuru mendu snika. Ku ba abantu be tu kutwa maybeno five by five meter envakuze abu yaguazu supportu. Oza osapoto anjanila mdu la forty by forty. Eh, uvale ngalanchu ay nigweyo. Now city inda si teta yo. Kuru mendeh EFF. Ambani nale ndoni ti si ti umhlaba ma utatwe ngapantje kwembuyekezo. Go ba winda washele kuze. Si kene ne si aloa. Si pelila zimfuyo. Imfuyo yetu si pelila kintu ne George. Nganga yeh ngamna umhlaba. Nkosi.
Thank you, Penduro. Just take that man's contact, sir. Yeah, he has useful information.
I'm Makaya Map, Mappeka from Plate. Greetings chaperson and the delegation and the leaders from the EFF. We support the restoration of land to its rightful owners. With the people of Plate Bay need houses. There's no land. There's a gentleman in two thousand and eight who owned land, who was selling the piece of land for eight million rand. And later, when he saw that the government is interested to buy the land, he, he, he increased the price to eleven million. And then later again, uh, after some, in twenty fourteen, the same guy uh, sold another piece of land for eleven million. And that piece of land is very small. People refused to go and stay there, eh, and with their livestock. Because that piece of land is about sixty by fifty. And we has, uh, people who are fa, doing emerging farming. We have our livestock and the piece of land that we, was given to them was very small. So people are in need of land in Plate Bay. There's a kind of confusion because some are need, need land to stay, others need land for farming. So we plead with the government, even the, the kind of houses that are built for us are very, very small. These RTP houses that are being built, they are being built in very small sites. That is the plea that we have, that the EFF and the government should move forward and fight for us to get this land, that the land should be expropriated without compensation.
Thank you, next.
Diabulisa i kamalam dugu nokwanda apleni. Ndisuka eplet npegpe winda yase Krex. Namndiso kasa leba umhlaba ma ufumanike because si chala ema chotio mbini siyacha umhlana zolu. Um, um, umme yeh wata kwa zu sakela because akwamhlaba. Umhlaba okoyo, umhlaba wabe lungu. La gleve venga palpelebe ku, beku neta. Si tambuzi manziini because asinandau. Akwenda waza wupeka wuyo. Asasabama si tini. Kula nyakpeleyo. Basisama, basisama uguanza e project ka fukuzenzele because aspangili. Imse benze ngabili. Sa kasuwa saba ipu meli because si tingan dun, si tingumhlaba. So keben kela ke ku government. Bangaba esindu si siteta apa. Ayasindu banba oza ka ilande lele. Ke si, si benetema jama smea glenda o smea wuyo njana. Si bo ngoba government de sofika pagla nda yase Krex. Because nda yase Krex ayipu la ngatu. Siyasokola. Siyasokola. Si chelo umhlana zolu. Si, imila ndu sa ma chotio mbyo taya kukuliseka tlakneta. Because wa winda wesima kuze. Wema winda wu esimijwati. Kufuma sava lena umhlaba zolu beka, ubeka ku yachotio mbey. Ayonda wino shala umtukage. Si tingan dun, si tinga imishla. Nkosi.
Interpretation, please.
I'm Nokwanda Apleni from Krex in Plate Bay. Uh, we supported the, the expropriation of land without compensation. The reason for that is that many of us, we struggle. We don't have land to farm. We don't have places to stay. We stay in informal settlement in areas where when there is rain, the houses are, get flooded. And some of the houses are, get, uh, carried, uh, moved away by different kind of floods. And the very same houses are also victims of fire when they, uh, this kind of mishappenings. So we are, we supported this bill due to that. We plead that government should exp, uh, expedite this pro, pro, process. It should not only end here. Would be very glad if for this, uh, government should go and visit our area and see the plight of the people there who struggle to find a place to stay. And furthermore, in two thousand and, uh, or last year, we tried to have some kind of a project because there's a lot of unemployment. But because we don't have land, we could not go any further with that pro, project. We are pleading with you to please, uh, get our support and get the, the wheel rolling.
Last speaker, please.
Diabulisa umhlala ngapambile. Ngu spio waka sono Abemoselbi. Di kalene kuenyene apate iti. Di kalene kuenyene ngulu leko. Ingaki endi na yo, endi ibonayo kutu. Umhlaba onandi avum kutma utatwa ngapantje kembuyekezo. Kotuwa gen ngafumanis ukuti na yonge londo lese tumklala ma utatwa ngapangke kembuyekezo. O ta ta be toka yeh ingonzoo asinamhlaba. Indenzekayo umhlaba. Ka uku no utu utatwa ngapantje kembuyekezo. Bazo utso kutu ingonzoo zitlo zufuma na umhlaba because buya fumanis ndubana. Noba kutatwa umhlaba ku yasku, ku, ku, kuwa sa ma chotio mbey. Ausoso ufuma na kutu kona umhlaba wengonzoo. Guo ufuma soku kutu umhlaba yoskuata abantu baskuata basale kona. So ni, apa geni tetela kitala elinjalun ba. Ma kutzongo kutu. Ukuti umhlaba ma uwuyele banduin. Ngoba banbe ngonzoo special ingonzoo sa sezayon. Asinaya zo sepilyonsu kutu. Funa kuze, kuze zufuma na iziza. Funa izi zenges, zenge umhlaba. Guo guze malez ngako. Ka uku no kutu ingo, umhlaba utatwa ngapantje kembuyekezo. Ko katkeleke nenngonzoo esu ngachongela nganduin. Zao zufuma na umhlaba. Ukuti kukonenda wegoiga ta ta kapa ngetitiltiti. Sasne project yo kutu ansiya kula. Ngengai ndoba sasanga na ititiltiti. Umtu wati wa utengolo umhlaba utata wake. Ge pons ngoko kutala. Uye wasku pa glo umhlaba. Wati kijenduenzekayo. Anina titil umhlaba ndi aubiala umhlaba wa. Wenza umhlaba wongo aubiala wenza ifetrisa ke pa. Londo leye ya etengoku. So ndisamguti umhlaba ma utatwa ngapantje kembuyekezo. Kotuwa nobumta umhlabi atatwa ngapantje kembuyekezo. Di kela tinabantu bamiyama. Si zitala si zonku kutu. Mas ngai fuyeli ndoba masbe ta ma chotio mbey. Si bu, si fuyele lena hati si ayfuyeli ndoba masxale e chotio mbini. Ma kutatwa umhlaba kakiuwa izindu. Abantu basale zindu. Kungea ta ta umhlaba ngoba kutwa ku yaskuata kutu, ku, ku, kuatwe. Only ka abantu ayiku enyindo ngapantje zako nseka. Mfen koko abantu bamin sa ma chotio mbey. Mas ipume anukubukalekwa ba. Mnandi itatin hati bubukalekwa si fuyela ndobana. Mas tolaksa umhlaba si xale apo senta ma chotio mbey. Andiabulela lo, le, le ngakaba ni fume namshange. Andiabulela na lende ipa i parlamenta ibe la pa iso. Fulkonu kutu kutu ma guenzu nja namaruwa umhlaba. Ka umhlaba ubu no utatwa ubuisela banduin. Diakondu ndobana ku yaba right. Ngoba Abemoselbi kuki lokisikutu eh jesus camp. Uku ba eh George Ilavai. Yeh nga zange ita tewu kuru mendeh ngela klasa imse eh court nineteen, nineteen seventy-nine. Ukusu zwa abantu basa ma chotio basa Abemoselbi besuwa kiloksikutu wakanu ngabo. Eh George ya kwa zutatu kutu Ilavai. Ndi ngorosi Ilavai. Di pina niti ngorosi ku, ku, ku moskes. Ngoba eh jesus camp yeh ngi ekona umshange. Ku ba esondo zinbin, esondo zinbin. Ndesi nga zange si beni kalelo kutu. Ma xali bekoni lokshinda Abemoselbi eh twa eh jesus camp. Ilavai niti ndiabulela londo le. Ukuti ba ita, tamta tukuru mendu wengene zelo. Ngela klasa bamse engonjen apo kona yatila woyagwina. Saifuma na nkosi.
Seeabulala ba.
I'm Spio Sono from, uh, Plate, uh, from Moselby. Thank you chaperson. Eh, I know I've experienced apartheid. And I've experienced the democratic era. Eh, the challenge that I want to raise here is something that has not been touched. The issue of expropriation land without compensation, I support. But I want us to also look on the issue of the churches. When we talk about this, we don't address the issue of churches. They are poor churches like the Zion Church. We does not afford to buy sites for itself. When we look at people who are going and staying in places forcefully or erecting informal settlement, this church can only manage to, uh, to squat even there, only then. Uh, but we also should not be excited about the erection of informal settlements. We should be excited that the land should be expropriated and, and formal structures should be built on it. And one other issue that need to be looked at is the issue of title deeds. Uh, because there was a piece of land that this certain group of people were staying in or had a church on. Somebody came to claim that piece of land and said that piece of land belongs to him. And he, he, he fenced that piece of land to keep us out of that piece of land. Only because we did not have title deed. So I really wish that the government should exp, uh, uh, expedite the issue of expropriation of land and not forget the issue of churches that should be taken on board as well. And furthermore, there was a case of Lavai Camp which challenged the apartheid government during those years. And that set a trend for this area, like the Jesus, uh, the Jesus Camp, uh, which was assisted by mosqueers to, uh, to be allowed to exist. But if it was not because of Lavai Camp, which was, uh, bold enough to stand against the apartheid era. These other eh, eh, places that are referred to the Jesus Camp and mosqueers would not have had the boldness of standing against the government of that, of that time. So I really plead that this process should not forget about those churches, the poor churches which cannot afford to buy their own piece of land.
Penduro, thank you very much for the best organization and management of this program. Uh, I also want to thank the members of parliament that were united, that we have to listen to everyone who wanted to speak. And they put your interest before their own interest despite the fact that they have a long distance to travel. Thank you very much. And to the staff, thank you as well for your patience. Because you can see that everybody spoke from their heart. And that's what we wanted to hear. And the interpreters, thank you very much. Because you never left anything.